Okay, it is Thursday, December 2nd, 2021. We'll call the meeting to session. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay.
Okay.
Do you have any reports?
I do.
You do?
Um, I have the county clerk's November 2021 fees and I have third quarter fees, November 21.
Okay. Do we have any new, do you have anything new in your calendar? Are we just going to go straight with BKD?
We can go straight to BKD.
We will go straight to BKD.
Teresa, are you there?
You're not muted. There she is.
I don't, can't hear you.
No.
No.
Can't hear her. Is it muted?
I don't know.
Can't hear Brian.
Brian can fix it. He can do anything.
Teresa, you can hear us, we just can't hear you.
Do we have them muted?
Go back to your laptop, maybe I have the laptop muted.
Oh, the volume on the laptop?
Yeah.
Now, can you hear us?
Can you hear us now?
She can hear us.
I can hear you.
Uh, we got you.
We got you.
She was just messing with us and moving her lips.
My record's still intact.
Okay, we'll turn it over to you, Teresa. We're kind of here, you know, I'd ask you questions about the premium pay. And so.
Correct.
So we kind of wanted to know what you've seen other entities doing and what your idea of premium pay is.
Yeah, so it's, I've had one other entity I know of do the premium pay that set up the whole program and everything. So I sent that over to Debbie and, and basically, I mean, I think you guys understood a little bit of it, but you know, you have to have those essential workers. It's for those workers that have had regular interactions with the public and handling items that are handled by others and things like that. So want to include kind of those administrative positions that I think some people are trying to put into it. But it's really for those workers that are, are people facing and things like that. So I think for the most part for you guys would be things like public health and safety, social services, things like that. So police officers, EMS, anybody that faces the public. So even like your people working at your departments that have public coming in and out and could potentially have some premium pay options. And per the Treasury guidance, I think this is something that you guys are concerned about that you can do this retroactively. So you can go back to the beginning of the pandemic and, and kind of figure out who is working what and doing what things and, and kind of give them a bonus based on that. I'm not sure if it's your state constitution that you're worried about in that respect, but I'm not familiar with that. So that would be something that you would want to probably go to them and ask if that's something. Because I, a lot of the entities that I'm working with, they are going to do the retroactive. So I would imagine, I mean, I can't imagine the state wouldn't want you guys to go back and do that retroactively if, if that's something that the Treasury is wanting people to do. So maximum is $13 per hour. It has to be up to $25,000. And it has to be in addition, so you can't supplement the pay. You have to give that money in addition to what they've already made. And the other thing is you can also, so I know you guys outsourced some of maybe like your janitorial work and things like that. You could potentially offer them a grant for those employees that were doing that kind of work and things like that to give those employees premium pay as well, so.
Teresa, as far as we're, as far as reporting, what would we have to have in place documentation wise if they choose to do that?
Yes. So that's a good question. So I think you have to go through a process with this. So you'll have to probably go to each department and ask them who they think qualifies for something like that. Get some kind of, I don't know, written documentation, time cards on what they were doing. Basically that they were, you know, people facing and dealing with the public or working with, you know, objects and things that people were dealing with. So yeah, so there definitely is a process that you would have to go through. The county, Central County, the other one I'm working with, not specifically, BKD is working with. I can't work on it because I do the audit, but they are doing, basically they have like a four-tiered kind of system. So those people that deal with the public and, oh, I should have grabbed that in front of me. I think it's those that deal with the public and are essential. And then those that deal with the public and it's not as like, they're not as dealing with the public. So maybe somebody at the police department versus somebody in the Treasury Department, those kind of get tiered into different ones. And then those people that were working remotely at some of the time, but also did public facing. So if, if people worked remotely, it doesn't completely disqualify them. If they were still working with the public at some time during the pandemic, they could still qualify in some regard. But you have to be really careful with that. You know, you just got to make sure that you document that those people were people facing or dealing with the objects that people were touching.
On the one that you showed, are there different premiums based on those categories?
Yeah, I don't, I don't know what the total amount for in each category is. I think the way they were going to do it is, I think they had a maximum of like $20 million. And then they were going to see what they got in as far as departments sending in employees and stuff like that. And then kind of allocate based off of what they were seeing as far as employees that qualified.
And if we do see ourselves as not being able to go backwards, I think that's the gist of it here, that we don't feel like we can go backwards, but go forwards with it. I guess just the same documentation and the same process would go for that.
Right. So yeah, it would be those same people facing kind of, kind of things and dealing with objects that people are touching.
Do you guys have questions?
Probably only as it relates to the specificity of Missouri versus other jurisdictions. We think we have this pesky thing called a constitution that says no back pay, no bonus for prior service. And I just sent an email to Jill to just find that. I know it's there. We all know it's there. But I'm wondering, so we can't do back pay, can we sort of split the baby by saying we're going to do this effective and use a date certain like today, tomorrow, or the beginning of the next pay period? So that we can start the process without actually having all the details.
So like if you're, you know, making a payment of a bonus, like this is a premium pay. This isn't payment necessarily for their work that they've already been paid for. This is a bonus on top of what they've already paid. So I don't know if that splits the difference.
Well, so I think that's what the constitution doesn't allow is we cannot.
Oh.
Yeah, we can. Right, yeah.
Got you.
I was just, you know, if we're, if we're, if we're slow in, in doing all this, you know, calculating, obtaining information, identifying the parties, if we're slow in doing that, we can't start until we, or can't we say we're going to do that and we're going to do it effective and it's a date today, tomorrow, or the first day of the next pay period?
Right, so you're saying let's vote it in today, but it may take us a while to actually implement and actually get the payment out.
Right.
To vote it in without the policies, without how you're going to do this? I don't know.
Well, we, I don't know.
Yeah, so I mean.
When is, when does our next pay period start? Not the one we're in now, but the next one.
We just started November.
So one started Sunday, so two weeks from Sunday.
Two weeks from last Sunday.
Yes.
Teresa, you would recommend we have all that paperwork in line before we start handing out any kind of money?
Well, we wouldn't necessarily have to hand it out. When the pay period ends, we're just accumulating it as we go. But it's, it's a fine.
Starts, starts.
You're wanting to put a start date?
Yes. Well, but we, actually we got almost two weeks to get it done if we want to do it all at once or trigger it then.
So yes, I think, I think Debbie's correct. We need to implement some sort of policy that lays out those guidelines and what kind of documentation you want from the departments to qualify their people. So that may take a little bit of time, but if we could get the process starting so that clock starts running, that would be great.
Okay.
I'd like to get the clock running today. I'm not even worried about pay period.
Well, that's, that's potential too.
Why wait?
Is it a administrative nightmare to do it three days into a 14-day pay period?
Yes. The beginning of a pay period would, would be better.
Okay.
Okay.
So I think if you wanted to maybe vote it effective the first day of the next pay period, which I don't have a calendar.
It's around the 12th or something like that.
The 12th. December 12th.
Okay.
Is that right? Yep. With the stipulation that we have everything in place.
Okay.
I understand we can work with BKD to come up with some kind of policies, guidelines, if they're helpful or supportive.
Right.
This premium pay you're talking about, I know that I spoke with all three of you about doing this in two, two payments instead of a monthly payment. I don't, I don't see a problem with coming up with the amount of money that you're going to pay and then pay it on December 12th payday, and I'm just throwing a number, $3,000. And then they sign an agreement saying that they'll stay with us for six months. Or they have to pay the $3,000 back?
That might be problematic sheriff, because it's, it's a per hour calculation. It's not a fixed amount.
So ARPA money that you're going to spend, not everyone's going to get the same amount of money.
Oh, no. Not necessarily. It's, it can be up to $13 an hour. Limit $25,000 and change in an annual period.
And I get what you're saying and what they're saying, but me being exposed to COVID is the same as Eric being exposed to COVID. There's no difference just because we're minimum salary. And I'm not talking about him and I stupidly go, because I'm part of the law. But our staff is the same. I think the risk is the same. I don't know how you can differentiate the one.
Well, you can. I'm not saying we necessarily will, but you can. I mean, you could make it $2 an hour, up to $13 an hour, or anywhere in between. It, that's the, those are the limits or constraints that ARPA puts on us.
And like she said, there are some places that have created those tiers of, you know, maybe there is more risk to your staff versus the person sitting in the office who's handing papers back and forth. So if you tiered that out, the money may look different.
I think the risk is the same, but.
Well, the.
There's no requirement that you do a tier system either. You can just have a flat system.
So I apologize for being late and missing the first half of this, but I do agree with the sheriff that it would be an added bonus for our situations if we did put some sort of stipulation on this money. Whether it's if you receive the money, you agree for six months of employment after the money ends or, or whatever it may be, or there's a repayment process if they don't, you know, stay with the county for, for a set amount of time.
So are we looking at a one-time, I don't think we're looking at a one-time payment. I think we were looking at a, every pay period, a certain amount is kind of what I was proposing. But you all are talking about a one-time payment.
Well, either way that it rolls out, I would like, whether it's a monthly payment or whether it's lump sum payments, I would like there to be some sort of agreement with the county that if you do not continue, that there would be some sort of repayment or, or limitation to the money.
I'm not honestly not too worried about it. If they're going to come in here and help us for the next year or however long we do this program, I mean, we need to be able to put, get people to work to provide a function of government here. And that's what I want to do is award, whether they're in touch with one person or 100 people.
I would agree with that. Now, I'm not saying that this is right or wrong, but the sum of money will be, will be an attraction to new employees. My concern would be, is that upfront, we have a significant investment in new employees. So if this money does only last for six months, a year, or whatever, we may end up holding the bag for training these people. And as soon as the, as soon as the money runs out, now we have a liability there.
As a thing to fix that, it would be just so much a pay period and not give them all of that upfront.
Well, and we talked about it would have to be renewed every 90 days. Like there's no guarantee that it would be a year. It would be, we're going to do a 90-day period. After the 90 days, you would have to be reviewed and it would have to be renewed.
So, so we're saying that doing, instead of doing $6,000 in a one-year period, you, you're saying that it's against the law that we cannot do two, $3,000 payments? Are you saying you do, you're choosing not to do that?
I think you have to document that it's an additional hourly amount. So you would have to at some point.
I thought what they said, and I thought what I read was that it could be an hourly amount, but it also can't exceed $25,000 or it cannot exceed $25,000. I believe that's what it said. I think the word war was in there. So I think that does give us some.
Well, it cannot exceed $13 an hour. So if you pay them upfront in one pay period, $3,000, you've certainly exceeded $13 an hour.
Well, and I'm just throwing that number.
I know. And I, you and I have discussed, you know, you have a, another mo, legitimate motive to encourage employment in your, your area. And perhaps Eric might have a similar one. But we're, we're, you know, we're constrained by ARPA in different ways. And we're constrained by this pesky thing called the constitution of the United, of Missouri.
So, so this ARPA money then, whatever you say is going to be hourly, does that mean if they put in overtime, they're going to get that hourly, that overtime hourly rate also?
Yeah, straight, straight rate.
So if we're doing it straight rate 40 hours, then you calculate on, on Jeff, on what his hourly rate is over a six-month period and say, we're going to give you $2 an hour. This is how much money it's going to be. You can base it off the hourly, just like you're saying.
Then you get into the struggle though if that person leaves.
They have to pay the money.
Yeah, I, no.
So there's 8,000 different ways.
No, I.
I think that's an administrative nightmare of collecting it back and getting the money and.
And if they've only been here a short time anyway, you're not going to have enough money to recoup that.
No, I.
So what you're saying is it's not going to be administrative nightmare to come up with a system that's going to give everybody individually a different amount of money over, over a one-year period?
I don't know that we're giving everyone a different amount of money.
You just said, they just said.
We have that. We can.
We can, we can.
She said they have a tier level of four different, you know, depending on like your road deputies, your jailers, as opposed to some of your staff that doesn't interact that much with the public. So it can, it can vary.
Well, and my concern would be if we do a lump sum upfront and you're saying if you don't stay six months, then we're going to recoup that money.
Yes.
If their last check is not big enough to cover that, then you're going to have to go into litigation to recover that, that overage.
Yeah, we can.
That's, that's additional headaches and money to do that to.
So I think there's lots of questions. So I would hate to jump too quickly.
Well, we, we have about, almost, we've got about 10 days to get our stuff together before the next pay period starts. That's sort of our drop dead, self-imposed deadline.
Yes.
Right? Okay.
Good try.
Yeah, it just.
I hear both of you.
Well, I, I think regardless, I appreciate that you're willing to do this. And I think it's an added benefit and a bonus that, you know, our people desperately are, are in need of and have earned by exposing themselves to, to this over the last two-ish years. My concern would be just making sure that we're protecting the county's funds. And if you guys are satisfied that, you know, whatever format we put in place accomplishes that, I'm fine with it.
Okay. Greg.
Teresa, we may be reaching out to get more information to help us formulate that policy and maybe help us define what we need from each individual department. And we'll go from there.
Yeah, we can talk through all of that.
And you guys as, you know, have the total amount of money and what amount of money you would be willing to put towards, you know, the county employees versus other things that we can use that money for and other projects. So if you come up with a dollar amount that you're talking about or something like that, that would help.
So are you all looking at per hour or per pay period? Because I, when we first started talking about it, I envisioned like per pay period and amount, whatever it comes to per hour. And we'll have it tiered if you're full-time, part-time, if you're working around a whole bunch of people or however we want to tier it. I was looking at per pay period, just a flat amount.
So the, the dollar amounts that I projected for you was $200 per pay period?
Yeah.
And it was only for full-time employees?
Yeah.
So if you're talking you want to do something for part-time employees or anyone else, we need to talk about that. Because the projected number you saw was $200 a pay period for every full-time employee.
But I think there's some other concerns in there than full-time employees that may be working remotely from home.
Well, so I think you would have, that would be the max. So you would have to have each department qualify their people. If they have people that don't qualify that are working from home, obviously they would not qualify for that amount.
Okay.
And that process alone will take time for them to evaluate each position that way. And they come up with the documentation that we need according to ARPA to be able to do that, to protect the county's liability.
Yes.
So we've got some policies that BKD had sent us that we could try to mirror or at least use as a template. And apparently it's working, right, Teresa, as far as you know? Oh, you weren't supposed to um before you said that. That was just supposed to be a guess.
That was a draft. I don't think it's a draft yet.
Yep. I can, I can take space with them and see how that process went initially to get all that documentation. And if there was any, you know, tips or tricks or best practices that they thought worked better.
Or if, you know, looking behind, they see that something would have been better to do it a different way. But I don't want to drag our feet on this. I think this is going to be a benefit to the community, paying our employees what they've earned and kept us open and functional. And at the same time, they're going to spend this money in our community. It's going to help us, you know, I think it's going to come back to us two or threefold. So I just don't want to keep dragging this on. It's, it's in there. It's one of the objectives of the ARPA money. So let's roll with it. So I, I think we just need to plan on doing it for at least the next pay period. I'd love to do it retroactively, you know, somewhat, but if we can't, we can't. And I think you had some numbers for the 200 per pay period. Came up to around $2 million?
That was for a year.
For a year?
Yep.
And, you know, I'd, I'd be fine just earmarking that right now. If we change our mind in three months, we can always change it, but.
And our employees need to know this, this is going to go away. I mean, it's not.
And let the record show, it does not apply to elected officials.
Yes, yes. But I mean, it's, this is for now. So when it goes away, they're, you know, don't go out and buy a $100,000 car and think that this money, I hope you.
So if you guys want to make that effective December the 12th, do you want to limit that to a 90-day period for the first time with a renewal?
Well. For tests, I mean.
Just, just to stay easy, clean and simple with the payroll folks, you, you don't make, necessarily make it 90 days. It's 14 days times the number of pay periods.
Right.
That, that you would put the suspense.
Span, good for you.
Right. 26 pay periods in a year, 13 pay periods in the semi-monthly.
We do for six pay periods, so.
Right.
Okay, Teresa, well, we'll be contacting you, so.
Okay.
Appreciate your time. Anybody else have any other questions?
No.
Okay. Well, thank you very much.
No problem. Thanks, guys. We'll talk.
Thanks. Where's your chief stuff?
She's in the office.
I'm in the office.
Well, you don't have it on your wall?
My home's right here.
Oh, okay.
So I just sit and pin them all day, so. Um, thanks, guys.
All right, bye.
They play professional football, Jeff.
What are they? They're the ones that do the Atlanta Braves chopped off, off thing, whatever.
Dallas.
That's all right.
Yeah, and you guys want to do a buzzer?
That's just one game. That's not Super Bowl.
Jeff, do you want to offer a motion to effective a certain date, do a certain thing?
What was the date?
12th, December 12th. Four, six pay periods.
So what, how we need to word that? How do you want that worded then to? I mean, once we get everything together with, they did a resolution for the other one, so.
Resolution of policies?
Well, we, we could do that resolution at the next, we'll get the good language.
Wait till the next.
Let's get this, get, get the language right.
Tuesday, yeah.
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 Okay.
Okay. Do we have anything else before we go into budget? Who is our first one? We've changed, so.
Sorry.
Donnie killed you.
Yep, Donnie.
Court, court security's on page 69.
Donnie, we'll ask you to come up here if you would. Somewhere there. Judge.
Would our marshals be eligible for the hazard pay?
The one letter county employee.
Yeah.
Yes.
They certainly, recognizing it's prospective, but looking at it retrospectively, they certainly were at the front.
Actually, the, the contracted security guys are the, I mean, we could even, if we were very generous with our, with ARPA money, we could go to the.
There's nobody who dealt more with this than those guys.
That's true.
I mean, they were the face of the courts to the public.
Well, and they kept us open, you know, it might have been limited at times, but I agree. If they're county employees, they take care of them and we can check on the guards too because they.
Yeah, they're, they're contracted. But that, she said, she was referring to, to maintenance. If they were, we had contract that they could qualify, so, yes.
Okay, so court security first, anything?
I think, you know, I think your numbers reflect, you and I met and Tristan massages the numbers that, particularly the benefit numbers that we don't really have access to. And I think that we're pretty much at the same place that we were before we took it with some numbers to reflect what we were actually going on. And I think we have successfully parsed off pre-trial release.
So the only one you probably should have given them a little bit of a heads up on is your meetings, travels and dues. That one looks a little out of place compared to usual.
Sure. In, in this particular budget cycle, assuming they have it, under the law, the marshals have to go to a training at Fletsey, the Federal Law Enforcement Training Center. It's a marshal training service. We have what, three new marshals?
Yeah.
And so we've calculated out the sharing of travel, the minimum, those sort of things like that. It's about $16,000.
18, I think, is what we put in there before.
Maybe 18. If it was 16, I'm sure it's going to be 18, but about, that's an estimated expense. If that program is available to us to get those people down to Fletsey to complete that training.
And unusual to have four in the same year, you know, we couldn't possibly have one sometimes, but it's unusual that we would have four that are going at the same time. And that's why hopefully that number would drop back off.
Yeah, I mean, that's not every year. That's just. Yeah, it was, it was 10 years since the last time we've had. So, and this is for the full-time, you know, we use a lot of part-time people, but this is for the full-time people. And it's a required training and a standard.
Do you guys have any questions on court security before, I think we're going to just jump through all of yours in a row?
Sure, that's fine.
No, I'm fine.
So next one is, actually, let's flip backwards. So let's do pre-trial release, page 67.
Thank you. The big difference in pre-trial releases is, as we're working backwards, we, under the current status of the law and current staffing the attorney general's office, the judges thought that we were probably okay getting rid of the separate insurance policy. And we took that money and we split it into training, but three of it, $3,000 of it, we put in pre-trial release. And right now, there's a lot of trainings that go on that judge. And right now, there's a lot of trainings that go on that Judge Walker thought would be beneficial to those pre-trial staff members. And so of that insurance money, $3,000 of it, we put in here for training, meeting travels and dues for the, for the pre-trial release staff.
And one other change you'll see there is we received about $15,000 from the state from a fund that was set up but never used. We pulled that back in and created a treatment services line. So you can see that revenue coming in in 2021 and then we funded it and spent it in 2022 on treatment services for the pre-trial release program. That will be a spend down of that money is what we're looking at there.
So it's a one-time only payment or?
Yes.
Okay, okay.
Any other questions on pre-trial?
I mean, we're full up.
What's, what's the definition of full up in pre-trial approximately? 265? Are, are you able to obtain the equipment you needed, you need to take, I mean, do you have 265 shackles flat?
No, no.
No, no.
These are people on various levels of supervision where it may only be the check-in level of supervision or electronic monitoring.
Okay.
Sober link, the alcohol monitoring and things like that. So we try to assess the risk and then use the equipment. The equipment's all leased and so at most, we usually have about three days waiting to order another piece of equipment.
Okay.
So we try to, everybody, we try to keep just enough on hand. But if we put, you know, five people out one day on a fine monitoring, several people will have to wait to do that. But, and like I said, we've got 265 people and we, and we've got plenty of people in jail too. But we've worked real hard with the people that could be out in the community.
Working.
With that.
Yeah.
But working, yes, and supervision.
So again, moving backwards in the book, we'll go to circuit court services on page 65. And that's where you'll see that insurance line has been reduced down and reallocated to some training.
I, I've probably been given this answer before and maybe this isn't the right time to ask it, but on these change of venue trials that, that sometimes land here and get quite expensive, are we getting paid by the county that's sending them here or by the state that?
The county who sends them here is obligated to pay.
Okay.
Now, I think, my understanding, I just asked that, we just completed a trial last year, or actually this year, earlier this year, for Monroe County. And it's, my understanding is that money came through.
I haven't seen the revenue hit.
I thought he's got an email.
Mark, okay, we need to make sure it hit the right spot.
I mean, that, you know, there were a ton of expenses in that particular trial because we didn't sequester, didn't have to sequester a jury. We do currently scheduled in October, have that Wayne County trial that we've talked about before. And as we have in the past, we've not allocated that in because we don't know that it's actually going to go. But we've got, you know, that's, we don't know until we get it. And whether they got any money or not, I don't know.
There was some proposed legislation that said the state would, would actually pay the county and then collect from the other county?
Well, yeah, it was, it was, yeah, but I don't think it ever got any funding.
Okay.
We worked, I mean, I, I put a bill together, I took it to Rudy. I think we got it through, but I don't know if we got any funding. I mean, that's the second step for everything is to have a, have a pot to put it in.
Right.
Talk, talk them into putting some money in that pot. Because, you know, we're a great place, I mean, we do a really good job with capital murder trials, but we don't want everybody coming here. And, you know, the state, when the state does it, they like doing it here because they live here. The public defender's office is either here or Columbia, they like doing it here because it's close. But we owe, we incur that expense.
Same with the pre-trial release, the money that they're saving by not having to reimburse us for them sitting in jail, you know, in the long run.
Well, they, I mean, they owe, the, the county owes for the jail time. I mean, the law's clear that who owes it, but, you know, when you're talking about counties.
It's hard to take another county to small claims or actually, assume, not, wouldn't be small claims, would it? It would be.
It would not be small claims, I think you're limited to $5,000. We're giving a lot more exposure.
Your predecessor joked that we would take their city hall, their county courthouse, and I'm like, no, no, no. Maybe, maybe we'll get pickups.
That's why we need another courthouse to maintain.
Yeah, pickups and we'll take their.
Just put a lane on it.
Yeah, we could, we could probably do that.
So, Harry, we've started to, on those change of venues, create kind of a project in our system that tracks the expenses for that and then creates a revenue line of where it gets reimbursed to us. So we've started to track those cases individually so we can see what the true costs of those change of venue cases are.
Because like, for example, the adding trial that we just did, we had jail time. Now, we worked out a degree with Monroe, the guy stayed in Monroe most of the time. So we did not incur that jail expense except for when he was down here for the trial for pre-trials or conferences or things like that.
And he paid?
Yeah, I, I think that that county, because the prosecutors specifically, just now we keep the judge, specifically wanted to make sure, and then so as soon as we had the numbers, then I shot her the numbers so she could take it to their county commission. So they would be prepared to do that and it's my understanding of taking care of it. But Chuck didn't come to me, so I don't like to voucher that. But, you know, we collect back for our security time, you know, the, we, extra security that we had to involve in that, those sort of things like that. So it's, you know, up to and including the jury stacks. Yeah, I mean, everything it cost us to have that jury come in. So, that one worked. But like I said, this next one, that's a fairly large number that we're anticipating and it's a fairly small county.
Yes.
That it's coming from.
Thank you.
Do you guys have anything else?
No, I mean, like I said, you can see where we've increased the line for meeting travels and dues and those sorts of things there. Like I said, the other odd thing is we got three grand for professional services. That covers the odd circumstance where we don't have a court reporter or something else like that. Giving all the gyrating that comes on, we're looking at probably a five to eight-day trial, which the Supreme, that everybody got disqualified on, that the Supreme Court assigned Judge Martin from California, who's a great guy and a good judge, but he's an associate circuit judge and does not bring any court reporter with him. So it is possible that we'll have court reporter expenses for that trial. And that, what's that, we figure that a day?
Five days.
No, that trial's probably five to seven days because I tried it once with the other defendant. Yeah. But it's, that's a fair amount of money. If we can get a court reporter, I mean, we try to fill in with, with our people, but if we take a court reporter from one of our judges, then that judge is dead in the water and can't conduct any trials. But that's, that occurred after we met with Christian and did the budget, everything, that this sort of gyration with the prosecutor's office occurred and we ended up with all the judges in coal getting this.
We could add a number in there, some kind of a realistic estimate.
Typically, we just come back to the commission on, on this stuff that we can't predict.
Yeah, that's a budget adjustment.
Wayne County case is, we just, I want to give you the heads up that that's out there. I mean, we're stuck with it, we got to do it, but.
In this circumstance, you know, sometimes those cases fall off, they, we, they move.
They settle or.
Yeah, so we've kind of taken the approach that when we know for sure it's going, we will.
Budget adjustment.
And to, to account for that.
But we just always try to give you guys a heads up of what's, of what's out there.
I think that's it for your guys' is, I think Donnell's coming later today for her.
The, we did talk about some capital stuff.
Oh, yes.
Okay, and. The, we talked about cleaning, I think. We're doing better with that, aren't we? Okay, everybody seems to be happy with what we're doing with respect to cleaning.
We have a new employee working on it, yeah. Dennis?
So that's.
Darren, I'm sorry, Darren.
Yeah, so I've not heard any, any complaints about that in some time. We do need to look at our large courtroom, which we use, whether it's a large criminal docket for a jury trial or for a large self-defuse docket, you know, the painted wallpaper is peeling off the wall in that room. The carpeting is worn, we need the jury seat reupholstered. I mean, that's a heavy use of room by a lot of people and we wanted to ask that not get looked at by the county.
So there's a question mark as far as the price tag on that.
I have no idea.
Okay.
You know, how that, that you guys would want to do it and then, you know, even to get a ballpark idea.
When's the last time we did anything to that?
Right, why don't we get rid of the painting?
Yeah.
So there's nothing been done?
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't remember.
Now, paint, all the paint on was red, the closest during men's restroom.
I don't think it's been done in, in my.
It hasn't been in my time.
And that's 15 years there.
So paint and flooring?
Yeah.
Hey, I want to drift back to maybe one of the other areas. I had a gentleman visit me, with me one day because he was a little bit excited out at the front desk and he came back and had a nice chat and he was a juror or a potential juror. And he said he was old and he was fat and that's a big hill to climb. And have we, I mean, have we accommodated those folks or could we by just letting them park, I mean, rent a spot for a day or two from the city? Has that ever come up in front of you before or concerned to you?
The, the hill has been an issue. We had shuttle buses and then there was unhappiness on your side of the table about the shuttle buses and so we don't do shuttle buses anymore. We could, I mean, we would like to do any and all things. I think if you talk to the people who show up for jury service, particularly those who serve, they would have a lot of comments of stuff that they thought we could, we could do better.
Okay.
But we've never, we were told we weren't going to do that. So if, if, we would, we would be glad to, to look at reconsidering that because, I mean, jury service is hard, starting with the hill. You know, that they park down basically in city hall and walk up the hill and we've only lost two people. You know? You know, so it's, it's, we call it the whole county health challenge. If you can pass this, you can be on the jury.
Give them a, give them a, give them a pass to the city garage for a week or something. What, that can't be.
We're, we're all for that, but we were told not to do that.
Okay, we're gonna, I'll pursue that.
So whose cases are these? That we're having the trials for? Are they county?
Yeah. These were, these were county, I mean, these were local folks and who are willing to serve, but this gentleman said, listen.
Well, in the states, you get them a tag to go park in the garage. And that's what I'm just, I have so much troubles with that they dump all their crap on us. Hey, we'll give you a judge, you know, y'all can take care of getting another marshal, some more parking, some more courtrooms, some more offices. And it's, I mean, they keep coming to the well and.
I know that's frustrating.
It is.
And it came the other way and, you know, it starts with, it's all the expense of the county because they're your criminals and.
No, not all the time. I mean, it's, some of these that come out of time, so.
Change of venue stuff is, is a different deal. But I, I know that it's frustrating, but it's, you know, I think we're forced at the.
What did we do, the trolleys a couple of times?
Yeah, but that, yeah, we used to do that. Parking is always a problem.
We could talk about a parking validator for the parking garage, but I don't know if the city can handle the influx.
I don't think they could do a jury panel for selection. You could do a jury trial. At one time, the prosecutor's office offered to do jury passes when we had the jury of, you know, 12 or 14 people.
Yeah, I mean, I think that's the issue when you're bringing in a panel of 100. It's, it's hard to find that location. Once you narrow it down to a smaller number, I think then we could work something out. But when you're bringing in 100 people at once, it's hard to find an area that can accommodate, especially up here close to our building, that number of vehicles.
Well, you might have a fat defendant one day and you'll never, and you won't see any fat jurors because they can't roll up the hill and that would be unfair, not a, you know, they're not your peers.
Certainly the challenges to fair cross-section and pure jury is, is, is out there. We talked about sound recording. Associate judges, Judge Limbaugh, Judge Stumpy don't have court reporters. And so their records are made with sound recording, it's a digital system. We have it in both of their courtrooms, we have it in my courtroom. We don't have it either Judge Walker's or Judge Green's courtroom. And what we're proposing is at about $12,000 is, is a sound recording system. And that's what they call FTR gold. Because we send Judge Limbaugh upstairs when we send Judge Green downstairs for Order Protection Day. And that's, that's a traffic control issue rather than running, you know, 80 people up to the fourth floor. We just do them all on the second floor. We talked about rekeying the courthouse. That was very popular with everyone on my side because, I mean, I don't know if Donnie has him with him, but.
These are just unnecessary ones.
That's how we know you're coming. We hear you.
Those are the ones that they use every day, not the ones they have to go look for. And we had gotten an estimate from Tyler's of, you know, $1,500, $2,000 every key to the courthouse. And then that would be more efficient that way. The security station, I don't know if you go, the security station has to go outside to let someone in the handicapped entrance that go there and screen them for security, get them to the building. They had asked for a monitor so that they could access to see what was going on there before they went into it. And I think by the time we got that done, that was about $1,500. Because it takes a computer and it takes wiring and it, and it takes, you know, that part of it there. We talked about a second floor detention area. Because when we take people into custody, we don't have anywhere on the second floor. And that's Judge Walker and Judge, Judge Stumpy and Judge Limbaugh. And we were going to put that in the marshal's area. We were unable, I mean, I don't know what you're saying, but people don't even show up to make bids. You know, I tell you, you know, personally, remodeling a house, that, that happens a lot. The last thing is, is a hearing assist system is, you know, we have several situations where we'd like to, right here. We've got, we had at one time some device to do that. I've not seen it in some time and when we tried to use it, it did not work very well. But that's probably been, oh, seven or oh, eight, the last time I could even mess with that.
Yeah, I remember, yeah, it's been a half time.
You know, and that's, that's something that we're obligated to do is, is provide that. And then it doesn't always work to put the juror up front to do that. So those are the capital items that we had asked about.
So going back to the second floor detention area, you're saying we could put that in the marshal's area?
Right.
Okay.
We think there's enough space in there.
Okay, cut location, I mean, space is what, you know, I'm like, we don't have much space.
Right, no, we think that there's space in there, but we think that would, because as transport downstairs, I mean, conceptually, when we, when we talked about the jail being the jail and the detention area being downstairs, but I think the sheriff will tell you the transport people and the people who work that area get drawn out all the time. And periodically, we get a situation where we have to take somebody into custody and we, there's nobody downstairs to come get them. And.
Can you draw something up, Donnie, just kind of a rough sketch of what we're talking about?
We're talking about just like the same cage we have upstairs in his courtroom. It'd be that way, pull about three prisons over.
Okay.
It'd be smaller than what we've got.
We scored it off, obviously, some of my kids have it right here, Jeff. You'll be back here, like parking, parking's office.
Okay, well, kind of like doing, like the sheriff does the reverse engineering stuff. I want to see what you want and then we kind of work backwards from there. Get a price, so.
We, we want some, a smaller version of what I have upstairs behind my courtroom.
Okay.
But we had tried to get some people to come over and then with COVID and then nobody's shown up.
But are those cells that you get then, you buy that and it just has to be installed or you build that?
They build them.
It's just floor, it's just floor to ceiling chain link.
Yeah.
Okay.
And build a, a pipe.
Okay. Okay. I mean, that, I mean, that's stuff our maintenance should be able to do too, as far as I'm concerned, but we have to either get janitorial off of their laps to free up time to do this stuff or we gotta hire it out. So that's something that's, we're kinda talking about too. That shouldn't be a high dollar thing, though.
Oh, it's a dang.
No.
In a certain way you wanna do it, but you've got the model already up there in your courtroom, so, okay.
Yeah, I think.
I might try to come by and look at that after a while too if we got time, Donnie.
Okay.
All right. You're telling me that the court reporters are $80 an hour, so you're looking at six forty, seven fifty a day. So, so to do it to a seven day jury trial, it's probably six, seven thousand dollars.
We have three in there, so that'll get it started.
Yeah, I mean.
We need to adjust it.
Yeah, I don't, I wouldn't put it in there until we know it's actually gonna go and then, but we, historically, we've tried to, when we do that, we've tried to tell you that this is out there. We were had all the jury trials go that we have scheduled, you know.
Scary.
It would be scary.
You guys have any other questions?
So are y'all still having to line people up outside?
What we've done with, by having masking, as unpopular as it is, okay, we've been able to bring more people in the courthouse. Now, we're trying not to stack people on top of each other. We're kinda running like every other person, but we've been pretty much able to get everybody in the building. Okay?
We've got to get up in here. It's gonna be a two judges now. The doggies are quiet. Scott and the outside.
So who's, who's helping them when they come in the door telling them, you need to go here, you need to go over there? Are the marshals being pulled out? Having to look up people's case numbers or?
We're still doing that to help them because otherwise, a lot of people come in and know where they're gonna go and they don't know what judges.
Okay, so my point is, is that part of y'all's job duty? Should y'all be doing that or is that something that we should have a kiosk up there with a computer and?
Well, we have a kiosk up there and we'll support a computer, but, you know, we, you know, we don't have anybody to put in there. We've talked about that before, some sort of, somebody to work through and sort through that. You know, we've got the, we eventually got the radios, which we tried to get when we were running up and down the stairs so much, and that's helped a little bit.
Is it gonna get worse when we get to bad weather coming? I mean, we've been lucky with the weather way it is now, but.
No, it's just not. It won't be bad. As far as service, Jeff, 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 part of our job is people service and that's what it is. And we have to help when they come in. They don't know where they're at.
But y'all have a limited number of people that are in the courtroom that are supposed to be doing other duties rather than traffic control and trying to help people get to where they're going.
One extra marshal we have a lot of time to do. He's down the courtroom, he's down in the hallway.
Okay.
He's helping people back.
Okay.
Thank you guys.
Okay.
Thank you.
That's it. Yep.
No.
Nope, delayed.
Almost.
Just getting just.
Donnie is, is again threatened to retire.
No.
Okay, and I'm pretending it's not really happening, so it works out fairly well, but when are your days?
Well, I gotta move it and be totally replaced with December twenty-second. And I'll be gone in the next two weeks. I'll come back, stay till February first. And then what about, the plan is, John's asked me to stay with him until he's gone and do part-time work for you all until he's gone.
We have several marshals that are exceptionally good with, particularly with the jury, running the jury system and, you know, working the jury trials. And I'd like to have Donnie, you know, come back on a part-time basis to do that and, you know, support some of our other part-time people.
But I wanna thank you all for all the help you've given me over the last twenty-three years, you know.
Yeah, we're getting closer to cloning, so we'll just, we'll just keep him till we can clone him, you know.
I'm gonna turn, I'm gonna take the battery out of the clock and so he won't be leaving the last thing.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And also want to thank you all. I wanna thank Kristen and Debbie and Jennifer and the girls because they really helped me a lot over the years. They've been great work. So, thank you all.
Yep, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Who's next, Mom?
Chris, that's the assessor. We kind of juggled things around yesterday this early so we could, that Kristen.
Coffee.
And the, ninety-eight is ninety-nine.
Okay. With ice or without?
Do you need water? Uh, I have one, thank you.
Chris, if you can come up to the table, we're gonna do your, your budget next.
This is just a little bit from the number from twenty-two. Let's motion it's called directly from the state tax commission.
Thank you.
Chris, do you have an extra cup?
I'm pretty sure I do. Give me just a second.
We need one for the minutes.
I thought you were ready to give her this.
Chris, do you have changes from what was proposed by me?
Yes. The first thing that I was looking at was the salary line and it has to do more with part-time people or new employees as opposed to increases in salary per party. State Tax Commission requires that I do a maintenance plan every two years and they have different charts, as you can see in the handout, that they use to track the amount of work that goes on in an assessor's office. The, you can see the first, second page is definitions and instructions. And then the third page starts out with the phase chart for 2020. This is the, the items on the left-hand side are the different items that the assessor's office does throughout the year. And if you look across the page to the right, you'll see the Xs which indicate which weeks this is taken, this is being done in. So some are only a couple of weeks out of the year, some are all year long and others are just once a, one week a year, which actually ends up being more, but like the state tax commission hero, hearings, we never get done with those in a week. We do BOE, but then we've got the state tax commission level to go to. The next page after that is the breakdown of the hours that the state tax commission estimates that these duties take place. And this was based on the Clear Basin software that we had. And you can see down at the bottom of the page, it shows the number of employees down where the total is. That's the number of employees that tax commission estimates that are needed during those different months. And then, of course, they give you the average down at the bottom of the page. I think that in the plan it reads fourteen full-time and four part-time. And right now, we have one part-time and twelve employees. And then going forward, the next page is the phase chart for 2021. The reason there are two different ones is because 2020 is not a reassessment year, so there's not as much, quite as much that we're doing as we are in 2021. And then, of course, the next page is the breakdown of the 2021 hourly items and then the average number of employees required. And then the last page is employee schedule, positions that we currently have, and then I've made note of three positions that were currently unfunded. And this is how I have to submit the report to the tax commission. So since, you know, we're in a new software and we're, we've had enormous difficulty with it, we have to have some additional people to take care of. When we had Clear Basin, we could get the job done with what we had. It was a faster system. This system isn't and we continually get issues that come up. The latest one being, hold of it here. There were, my residential praiser was, or supervisor was reviewing some of the data and found that the data that had been rolled over from 2022 to 2023 was incorrect. So it showed that the totals were correct, but it didn't show any of the items in, that made up the totals, the structures, the land, those type of things.
Chris, you said from 2022 to 2023, is that?
Correct.
That's future, isn't it?
Yes, that's how we work things there.
So they closed their 2022 books and rolled into the collector, so they're actually working in 2023 now.
Twenty-twenty-two is not a reassessment year, but twenty-twenty-three is.
I understand.
But as soon as we certify values July first, we roll forward and we're working on 2022. And then.
All right.
We're also looking further ahead to 2023.
Okay.
Right?
Okay.
Anyway, the, the current one, it's, there were three hundred and forty of these that were found in one day. And the problem is that these numbers, these, these items, they go back to, to the company, they look them over and then they send them back again. And then my supervisor has to go through and look at each one of those individually to check to see if it's correct. And this is extremely time consuming. And if it only happened, you know, once a month, it wouldn't be a problem, but it happens almost weekly. And I've got a whole stack of different things I could go through for you if you wanted to take the time to do that or do something outside of this meeting, because I'm afraid that would take up about an hour or two. And I know you don't wanna do that here. So additional employees seems to be the best solution for right now. Obviously, I would love to go back to Clear Basin and not have to have the additional employees, but we're not there yet. So, any questions, comments? Mary, I apologize that I have not gotten the response back for you. I will have to give you fifteen minutes of me living here.
Well, I was gonna bring that up, Chris.
We could talk about it here.
Well, I mean, I sent you an email on October fifth, October twelfth, October nineteenth, October twenty-seventh, and finally you answered after about four of those and you answered by saying, "Your reply will be forthcoming." And I looked up the word forthcoming and that meant, that means soon. That was twenty-seventh of October and I'm still waiting.
I did reply to you previously.
Yes, and, you know, we don't agree.
That's, that's absolutely correct.
And, and I pointed out to you, the personnel manual, what it says, my, my, my belief that you're doing that inaccurately or incorrectly and we still, so it's been a couple of months now, and this needs to be finished and rectified and taken care of.
And this is, this is what I've got so far on that matter. I need to clean it up a little bit to make sure that everything is correct and proper.
Okay.
Two things that I would say. First off, when I took this job fourteen years ago, we had a different presiding commissioner. And when we talked about overtime, I was told by that commissioner that they would not be paying overtime to the assessor's office. So I don't know that we've ever had an overtime request approved. And I don't know if you can hold that up, if you wanna check it or whatever. So we've had to take other steps and we've had to use comp time. Now, the reason the comp time was used were because errors in the debt net system that had to be fixed. The employee was at home or on vacation when a lot of this work was done. If she hadn't have done the work, we would have been sitting dead in the water. As far as the, where it says in the, in the rules that you may take one hour at a time, I don't believe that that is correct and proper because of the jury department corrections had a suit over this very issue, I'm gonna say, ten, fifteen years ago, and it was ruled that those officers could take time and however long they needed to. They were not limited to specific increments. So I don't know that that is a legally proper thing to do.
All right.
Finally, I would say in the response from your HR director, she, this is where she responds to Ms. Ridgeway, our recorder. She says, "Reminder, this is the general county-wide employee handbook. If you need policy deviations for your specific department, you can work on those and implement them at your leisure," which is what we did.
Independent of telling the commission what you're doing?
Correct. I don't work for the county commission. I work for the taxpayer. And the county commission makes all kinds of rules. Whether or not those rules all apply to the assessor's office, I don't know the legal decision there.
Yeah.
But we did what we had to do to get the job done. Nobody's abused any hours. Nobody has taken hours that weren't actually worked, so.
If that's the case, why are you not recording them?
Because we were told that we would never get overtime.
Why, why?
Be authorized.
Chris, why, why do the timesheets show worked while the person is three states away? Why doesn't it show comp time taken?
Because that's all done in-house because that's an individual thing that we do in our office.
So it's false to say that they're working when they're three states away and it's approved?
No, it's not false to say that because they have their laptop with them and they are doing work.
Oh, that, so when you see Mount Rushmore in the background during the week, they're working?
It didn't mean they did an eight-hour day, okay? It meant that they were.
They recorded eight hours, they, they recorded eight hours every one of those days for two weeks, every day.
That's correct.
And they were in, they were in Dakota. Once, one time, Chris, one time they were in South Dakota. At another period, they were in Colorado. This is six months apart. Another time in Mexico, country of. Did they take their laptops to those places too?
I would imagine so.
You would imagine so. Okay, that's fine. That's fine.
That comp time was not all earned while they were on vacation. The comp time is earned when they come in at seven o'clock in the morning to do some work or when they're working from five o'clock to ten o'clock at night at home.
Fine. When the comp time is taken, it should say comp time taken rather than working hours when you're in another country. That's my point.
Okay, we're, we're working on budget. Yeah.
Yeah, we're working on budget, but let's get back to budget. When you talk about the, the state tax commission says you need eighteen people?
Well, fourteen full-time.
Okay, fourteen-four. And that presumes that you're doing, you're following the statute and doing a county-wide reassessment every two years, doesn't it?
Yes, it does.
And you've been here since two thousand and seven?
That's correct.
And how many county-wide reassessments have you done since two thousand and seven?
Well, let's see, seven was done before I got here, so nine, eleven, thirteen, fifteen, seventeen, nineteen, and twenty-one.
You've done county-wide reassessments each year?
We've done county-wide reassessments. Now, not every property changes value.
That's right.
A lot of properties, and you have your list of whatever properties that you have. And I haven't seen the list, so I don't know how to answer to that specific property that you're talking about.
I gave you a schedule of two blocks on a certain street several months ago. You were gonna go through that and explain those to me. You've never gotten back to me.
And there's been kind of a time crouch lately.
Well, this was July, wasn't it? Was it July that I gave that to you?
I don't remember the exact date.
Yeah.
I can look back to details.
Right. Okay, while we're on this subject of, you've, you've done these reassessments every two years, follow the state law. So if a person is sitting in their house now in 2021 and the number hasn't changed. So if a person is sitting in their house now in 2021, and the number hasn't changed since 20, or 2007, 2007, they're pretty, they're in a pretty stagnant neighborhood, aren't they?
That's correct.
Yeah, like me. I'm in a real stagnant neighborhood.
The house itself has not been kept up, and the condition of the house has deteriorated.
I see.
That happens quite often.
Yeah. So of the 34, 35, 36,000 parcels of real estate in Cole County, about 10,000 have not changed a penny since 2007?
I can't say for sure whether that number is correct.
Right. Yeah, okay.
And it's.
Just as long as.
There's all kinds of factors.
Yeah, there's, there's all kinds of factors that say one-fourth of the parcels in Cole County have not changed a penny since 2007.
And, you know, if we had the people, we could speak to every one of those and see what the reason was.
Yeah, okay.
Well.
Good answer.
That might be a standard meeting, but.
What I would have to say is, according to the State Tax Commission, the accuracy in Cole County is the best in the state.
Right. You give them the numbers, yeah, I do want to go there. We'll be at it another time.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know how it can be, but.
One other thing, this, this is probably my last thing. I've been told that you plan to send a notice, mail a notice to folks about changes that are coming in 2023. Is that accurate?
I believe so.
Why are you doing that?
Right now, I couldn't tell you. I spoke to my residential supervisor about that, but it's not right in front of my head right now. I've had several things going on lately.
Does the statute require you to do that?
I don't believe so.
So why would you do that? For the first time since 2007, you're going to send that? Why, why would you do that?
So we inform the taxpayers of things that are going on. And I don't remember what the exact notice says. I could go back to the office and find out, but yeah, we send out notices on different things.
No, I, I was.
We send out notices, we send out notices to people to remind them that they can file online, so we can have more people filing online, which saves a lot of work.
I'm specifically talking about you sending a notice to the parcel holders, owners in Cole County, broadcast to all 36,000 of them.
Okay.
Is, is that your plan to do that?
I'm not sure how many the, the, they will go out to. It's possible that it's all of them.
Okay.
I honestly don't remember at this moment.
And my, my question is, why would you do that?
To inform the taxpayers of whatever the issue is.
What's the issue?
I don't know off the top of my head. I would have to go find out. My mind has been on other things lately, not that, I spoke briefly to one of my employees about.
You know, I, I asked you.
They were preparing that and asked me if this is something that we should do.
I asked you, I asked you this summer why you didn't do a countywide reassessment for 2021, and you told me it was because we made you go from one software system to another. I asked you why you didn't do it in 2019. You told me it was because of your surgeries. I asked you some of the earlier years, in 2009, why didn't you do it? You had almost a good answer there, I think.
Almost a good answer.
Well, your answer was, your answer was, we had a, a recession hit. You know what? And I, I bought that. That's probably a good answer, because in, we, at the end of eight, we had a hell of a time in this country. But you know what? We've, we've recovered.
How much are you aware of mass appraisal? Do you know much about mass appraisal?
I don't know a damn thing about it, but I do know what the statute says.
You probably learned something about the way mass appraisal was done before you start making judgments. I've been in my job for 14 years. You've been in yours for less than a year.
That's right.
So you learn your job, let me do my job, okay?
Uh huh.
Stay out of my office, let me do my job, and we'll get along just fine.
We certainly will.
If you want to micromanage me, we're going to have problems.
Okay, well, we're talking about 10,000 parcels who haven't changed by a penny, and since 2007, that's not, that's my, that's not micro. Okay.
Okay, okay. We will, yes, we will talk about it more. Let's go back to the budget.
Anything else? Any other questions?
I just want to comment about DevNet. I mean, it's a great program for most everybody. We've got it. You made a comment about getting weekly complaints and issues. I've, I'm on, I'm CC'd on the help desk.
Yeah, I know.
Emails, so I do watch that, because we did changeover, and I want to make sure that it works good.
And is it working good?
Everything has been, they're addressing it all the time. A lot of times, you'll get a duplicate complaint, so they merge tickets. There's things, there's headers, displays, stuff like that. So, okay, it's small things. It's not anything that's slowing y'all down, Chris. It's just y'all are just, y'all are just not wanting to change, and you just want to bitch about it. All you want to do is bitch about it. If you just would embrace it, enroll with it, it is a great program. So I, I'm just tired of hearing about the, oh, the commission forces on me, and it's slowing us down. That's complete bullcrap.
They should be the same numbers, and they're not. Most of the time.
You said you're getting stuff weekly, and I'm not getting emails weekly.
Okay, I'll tell you what, I'll.
I had about two in September, one in November, two this week. One was merged into the other one, so I've seen them.
And some of those bring us to a dead stop.
Oh, no, they don't.
Well, I'm sure that you know better than I do, don't you, Jeff?
I don't know. That's why you're never fucking attacking me if you're going to mock me like that.
Go ask any of my employees over there and get their opinion of the system.
If that's the best you can do is mock me to do your argument, then we might as well not even sit here.
I can cover that, because I.
I can go talk to my three-year-old granddaughter, have more of a, a good talk with her.
I'll get that list of the items that you want. I can tell you for a fact.
I've got it. You don't have to fabricate bullshit for me. I've got the stuff here, Chris.
Good. Okay, let me say something. When the contract was signed with this company, okay, when you all signed the contract, besides Harry, he wasn't here, okay? The RFP stated that the software was to be complete and ready to go into operation on the day the contract was signed.
It was.
We are now five, are you out of your mind? We're five and a half years later, and it still doesn't work. Our commercial is maybe a fifth in place.
It just doesn't work because you don't want it to.
Okay, Jeff, I'm glad you're a mind reader, but I'm afraid you don't know anything about CAMA programs.
I'm a mind reader. Now I'm a mind reader. Can I get a?
Well, you just, you just said what I.
Well, we let you keep Clear Basin for quite a bit longer than that, but again, I'm not going to, we need to do the budget, and then we need to have a session where we discuss all of our, so.
And I didn't bring it up.
No, I would, I would suggest.
Didn't bring what up? DevNet? You want to rewind this and go back and see who said, "Well, we're continuously getting complaints." Oh, all weekly, every week for, every month, and this is what's slowing us down? Wham, 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 wham.
Wham, wham, wham. I'm glad that you're so adult about this, Jeff.
You started it.
Okay.
Chris, I, Chris, did you, did your staff suggest that there would be some reassessments if you had Clear Basin, but there won't be reassessments because you're on DevNet?
No, there would not be.
So if there's an email, if there's an email that says that, that, that email was fabricated, or what do you think?
Is there an email that says that?
Yeah, there is.
Okay.
I'll, you bet you can. I'll get it to you.
And it's an email that went to you?
No, it didn't go to me.
Who did the email go to?
I'll have to check. Yeah.
So.
I'll be happy to furnish it to the world.
You're reading other people's emails now?
I didn't say that.
Can you forward it?
We won't even go there, but.
Yeah, you don't want to go there.
No.
I would, I would request, though, that you remove your access from our CAMA program, because that's a violation with the Secretary of State. And you can check on that if you'd like. I will, okay?
Okay. Budget.
I don't think anybody else has got any more questions, do you think, Sam?
I think we've done enough for.
Tell you what, we certainly have. If we could stay on task, it might work. But when you're just guessing at things on how something works, it's not doing any good.
Have a nice day, Chris.
You too, Jeff.
Thank you.
You guys want to take a 10-minute break and then?
I think so. Yes, I think so.
Hey, can I have a break?
Yep.
Is Eric still here?
I got mine.
I believe he is.
Well, if he left, then Sheriff gets his budget, right?
Yes, Eric's here.
Is there an extra copy of that?
Walkway, take a break, come back.
Is there an extra budget book?
He went yesterday, so we can shift some other people around.
My name's Madison.
They can offer comp time under federal statutes, like God's statute, granting it. They can do it, but it has to be scheduled.
You call her, everybody knows that.
Accommodate it.
See, he has to be utilized in.
I walked into Chelsea, I was watching it.
He has to be accountable for the comp time.
So what did I say about Jackie? I missed it here.
And he's, he's allowing.
Rewind it, watch it.
So we've got the resources, Harry, to go on.
Hey, Steve, it's all 9:20. Oh, and it was late in the morning. I sent you an email about the fire. I don't know if you all have seen that yet. I'll try to send you, send you the text. But I'm still, still, just want to make sure I get it to you. Call from the center. Call from the side.
Just took his own arms and beat him up with his own arms. Monkeys. Oh, man. Empty bottles, money's cleaned up after me. You do have to pay for that front row seat, Jeff, bro. How you doing, morning?
Good. I think so.
Okay. I got my blood flowing. Yeah, we're still. So is Eric at nine thirty?
He is.
Okay. Guys, gotta kind of try to stay on schedule.
Hey, we're not, we're still there.
We're good.
Yeah.
And we do the sheriff for about five minutes.
This is very program. I don't think Tom even has a problem with it.
Do you guys want to do EMS capital first, or do you want to do regular budget first?
Whatever, you're, you're the boss.
Let's do their operating first.
Okay, what page?
Um, one sixteen and one seventeen is expenses. Page before that is revenue. Could you operating budget first and then capital?
So Eric, you forget, I guess you didn't get the memo. New guy brings the donuts and pie.
We just got that taken care of.
I don't see any pie.
Just checked on it, it's coming.
You missed pie day.
What pie day?
Wasn't there like a national?
National Pie Day was yesterday.
Every day is National Pie Day.
In your world.
Every day.
March fourteenth, three one four.
That's the other pie.
Yes.
Okay.
Go, Eric.
Which, that's really weird too, because pie is like the shortest word, P.I.
Let's get going.
Pie, the formula just goes on and on and on infinitely.
Hi, welcome.
We digress.
Three point one four one eight, something, 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 something.
I hate it.
So any changes you see to your operating budget budget six, sixty-four and one?
Um, so just, just a note for you guys from the salary position. I did add another emergency medical dispatcher. That is in an effort to get the communications supervisor from fulfilling a full-time dispatching role. So currently, Chief Kennedy is not only working the console full-time, but is also responsible for overseeing communications and doing a large portion of our radio infrastructure and those sorts of things.
So is this eight total then?
Uh, it, it would be seven plus a part-timer, right? Seven plus a part-timer.
I thought we were at seven.
I thought we were eight and then you would move him out.
So, so he was part of the six. We would now have seven plus a part-time.
Hold on, hold on, because two nine, four, four, four. Eight, yeah, so it was eight and you're gonna go to nine.
It would be eight, go to nine plus a part-time.
Okay.
And that's included, so I did include that position in the budget?
Um, I'd also like it to be, you know, I did this with about two weeks on, on, on the job, so I've done my best to make some mathematical predictions and analyze where we were. But as far as some of the contracts and those sorts of stuffs, we're really just kind of relying off of where we were last year and really trying to get a good beat of, of what a budget looks like for this year and then kind of move forward. So this year is, is pretty conservative. I think we, we've planned to, to maintain where we were last year. But I, I do think that, that we can be a little bit more lean in, in the upcoming years. I just don't know where that is yet.
And I just want to note real fast, on the salary side of things, we made some changes to pay codes and things with the holiday time and the paying of overtime, that you're seeing that, uh, those lines a little different than you have in the past. So we're now tracking that unscheduled time separately from the regular overtimes. We added a separate line for training time and holiday time. So that mixture of numbers looks slightly different this year in the budget than we've seen in the past. So hopefully we get a better handle on those costs by tracking them in separate lines. But that's new to us and to Eric, so bear with us while we work out the keys.
That's good, though, I think that worked.
So as far, do you have it split out between dispatch and EMS? Okay, thought we were doing that at one point.
I think, I think math had suggested.
We're in the budget about possibly pulling that department out separately. We never did move forward with the changeover of EMS director, so.
Okay.
That's something we could talk about going forward.
It'd be easy to grasp those number, to get those numbers, wouldn't it?
It would be on the payroll side of things. The other costs associated with dispatch might take us a little longer to pick the parts and pieces out of the individual line.
Yeah, and it may not be exact science, but I, I think, I think the reason I really like to do this because at some point, we're gonna have a joint communication system, or that's what I envisioned.
Yeah, that's what.
And that's kind of what I've gathered from you guys as well, and even our city folks
and fire departments. It just would give us an idea of what we would have to, to put into the system.
Yeah, that's probably not a bad idea, because as we work towards a dedicated nine-one-one, we actually know what the, what the cost is to us right now, so.
And I think that right now, having two separate systems, there is some duplication of costs that maybe could be avoidable as far as software and systems and things like that.
Can we do that then?
I don't think that's something we can get done before we approve the budget, but I think that's definitely something we could be tracking on the backside this year with the possibility of changing it over.
I think that the salary piece is probably much easier than the physical operating budget of the communications center. That, that's gonna be a little bit more difficult to bear out what we're spending on that outside of tracking what we're, we're spending.
Yeah, there's some things you can pull out there that are pretty obvious.
Well, and some things are very, like uniforms, I mean, we, we purchase uniforms, so you would have to go through and pick out the individual people in that department and track them. It's a little more involved.
Okay.
Okay, I mean, we don't have to pull it out and do it as a separate, on your end, but I think that's something we really want to look at and get some notes together.
I think, I think that if, and when we go down that path, we could sit down and pull some of those numbers out retrospectively from previous years.
Okay.
And come up with a good idea of what, what that was.
Okay.
Then I saw a couple of numbers on, I know a few, the budget officer made an adjustment on that one.
Yep.
Is that gonna be enough? I'm just, because right now it's.
It's kind of a guess, I mean, I don't know that that's going to be enough.
Because did we use the public works numbers like we did? I don't know, Eric, have you known that Public Works, it has a number, we take about the miles and gallons that we'd used previously and budgeted? It's still, still way up here right now. I've heard it could go even more.
I think what we had done is, is the number that, that we requested was based on the prices at the time that we were working through the budget, and I think it's you made your adjustments, you took it even higher. So I am not, not sure that it is going to be enough, and I don't know how we're gonna forecast that.
It's sometimes it's. All right, so then on your medical supplies, are those costs going up too for those things?
Hand over fist. So what I did is I went back and I looked at the previous five-year time span, calculated about a twenty percent increase year over year for the last five years, and that's kind of where that number comes from. We're looking internally to see how we can maybe control some of those costs from an inventory management standpoint, looking at who our suppliers are and those sorts of things. But to be, to be, to account for everything, I think that somewhere in between those two numbers is probably gonna be where we want to be.
Okay. Yeah, those are just kind of two differences in there. They are shot in the dark at, at some points, but I don't think I had any other questions on it.
I think I'm, I'm good. The only other thing that the G E M T's fees would, will probably be lower than what we have listed.
Well, thank you.
And that offset, it happened to revenue as well, so both of those items should go down.
Yep.
Do you guys have any other questions on the operating side of EMS?
No.
So if you look back to page one twelve, the capital expenditures come out of the sales tax side of the budget, and there is a list there of the 2022 capital requests. I don't know if you want Eric to go through anything in particular.
Eric, one number of course stands out, it's the big one, five eighty-five, is that three?
Uh, that, that is three. So again, this was, this was done on a, on a couple of weeks of experience, and now, over the last couple of months, we've had some clarifying pieces to this number, and you know, obviously with the changes of the world and supply chain, there are a couple items that I might want to add, and I don't know if this is the right forum for that or not, but, uh, so the ambulance piece. Speaking of the ambulance piece.
How many phones you got in there? So start calling and messing with them.
From, from an ambulance standpoint, that number, I believe, is gonna be closer to seven hundred and eighty thousand for the three of them. I think that will comfortably allow us to explore whatever options we decide on in a couple of weeks, and that, that will comfortably, whatever we choose will be underneath that, that number. I'll just run through the rest of it, the tech amount, mounting arms. So this is a additional piece to our striker cots. It's kind of like a arm with a platform that allows us to attach the monitor and keep it right on, on the cot. Currently, we have to lift the patient's head to kind of put the monitor underneath, or it gets secured in the ambulance, and if you spend some time with us, you'll know as soon as that monitor goes on, cords go on, and, and things turn into a jumbled mess of spaghetti, and then moving that, that monitor becomes a problem. So these mounting arms will allow it to sit right on the cot, secured, in case anything were to happen, and keeps it off the patient and allows the patient to be in whatever configuration that they need to be. So those will be a really good tool, and crews are really excited about those. Computerized system status board, these would be a digital display in all of our stations that display not only call information, truck status, calendar of events, and any other relative information. These allow crews to see, you know, if there's a memo or something in real time, they don't have to continuously go back and, and look in their, in their emails or things like that. So those are really popular with most emergency services now. As you'll see, the, the rest of this, really a lot of it is housekeeping and general update to our facilities. So sixteen recliners and seventeen mattresses bought from, from Firehouse Furniture, I would, or some sort of manufacturer specific for public safety. That, the materials are built a little bit different, you know, will allow us to utilize those for a long time. They're, they're built for public safety professionals and, and, and the, the high wear and tear that goes on those. Currently, our recliners are in a state of disrepair. I had to purchase two mattresses out of my facility updates just recently, because staff said they were unusable. So we've gotten those taken care of, but we should look at replacing the rest of them. Bags, this will be a change. So one of the things that has come up over the time that I've witnessed our operations is that our bags do kind of need to be reconfigured to allow us to operate more efficiently on scene. So that number would go from thirty-six hundred to about fifteen thousand. That would be for replacing all of the bags and medical configurations that we have.
Go from what, thirty-six to?
Thirty-six hundred to fifteen thousand. Six laptops. Currently, all the administrative staff are issued the Toughbook computers here. While they are wonderfully durable, they are very expensive and kind of bulky and consuming. What Brian had suggested is that the command staff goes back to traditional laptops for our personal use, which allows us to carry them a little bit easier. We're not working with these in the field, these would be office computers. And then we would also transition these to, to the crews to allow them to use them in the trucks for their information. So that's what that request would be for. Three desktop computers to replace outdated computers. Backup servers for some of our information, that's, Brian feels that we need a new backup server as well. Paint at headquarters, not sure if you guys have been over there lately, but the last time headquarters was painted, it was done by the crews on their time. I believe it's time for a professional update, so I'd like to go ahead and get that taken care of as well. And then the final real thing that would be new, applicable to the stations, would be station lockers. As you know, our crews now carry a full set of bunker gear, like the fire department utilizes. They have a, a plate carrier for hazardous situations, they carry flotation devices. All of that gets really hard to store. Currently, our crews are utilizing, you know, gear bags that they purchase on their own, and you know, they're kind of just all over the place, they don't have a central place to store their stuff while off duty. So putting those station lockers at each station will help keep track of that stuff and keep it in a good working condition. The next three items, the three radios, three laptop cradles, and antennas, those would be outfitting for the, the new ambulances as well.
Is that included in the seven eighty number, or it's not?
Um, the, the radios and the antennas would, would not be. What I don't know is if any of the radios are in usable condition coming out of the older ambulances, I think that'll just be a technology question at the time. This is, this is how the last ambulances were specced as well. The radios interior equipment was not included in the last ambulance price, so that's, that's why it's included here. And then the, the one last thing would be a replacement of the 2012 Tahoe, which is currently assigned to the training division. That is more out of market conditions, I was going to wait until next year to purchase that. However, the sheriff informed me that to buy or purchase a Tahoe off of government contract right now, they are accepting orders in 2022 with delivery in 2023. So my, uh, my heartburn is that if we wait another year, we're actually looking at 2024 before we see delivery of that vehicle. And now, that's a twelve-year-old Tahoe that we're operating, so.
Do you have the price?
That would, roughly, I believe it would be forty-five thousand dollars, looking at some of the numbers that we purchased the previous Tahos for accounting for market factors. So in total, if I did my math right, that would take the capital request from seven hundred and twenty-seven thousand nine thirty-four to nine hundred and seventy-nine thousand three thirty-four.
So on that Tahoe, is that stickered ambulance, or the radio moved over, and all the goodies?
The Tahos?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, that would come up.
Forty-five includes all that? Okay. Seems like we always get surprises on things. Forgot to put tires on it. Okay.
Uh, I, the good thing is, is the, there might be a, a lighting, emergency outfitting costs associated with that, I'm not sure what it would be. But as far as the big ticket items, radios and that sort of stuff, those have already been replaced in the current Tahoe, so those would.
Well, I mean, that's what I would want included in that price tag, is the lighting and everything, because it's not gonna do us any good without everything.
And I, and I can circle back on that. That was literally something that the sheriff brought up two days ago, so, you know.
Yeah.
I just wanted to make sure that we're forward-thinking on, on purchasing that Tahoe.
So are there other options then, besides the Tahoe?
There, there would be, I think you're looking at Durango.
A Durango, but.
The, the issue that I could foresee is that maybe something the size of a Durango or an Explorer would be a little bit smaller than what we would need due to the amount of gear that we carry. You know, the Tahoe, as you all can remember when you rode with me, is pretty full in the back from, from just the stuff that, that I carry, so.
I think we're just full.
Eric, if we're fortunate enough to obtain the grant for the new location, do we foresee that to cover the contents as well, or are you?
I think that, um, I'm not necessarily prepared to go fully on record to say what the number would be. I think the grant would cover a very substantial piece, from what I am seeing right now.
Okay.
Either, either way, I'm very encouraged by that undertaking and what kind of that initial conversation has been with Architects Alliance, in the fact that our capital contingency fund would be more than sufficient to fund that building, even if we did not get a number.
Okay.
Other questions you guys have?
Nope, I think you've been a good steward of county money.
When was the last ambulance we got? Do you remember right offhand?
Mayor.
You probably figured out the facts. Um, we paid for the last three in November of 2020.
Okay.
And they had been delivered by then, or they were delivered a little bit later than that?
Most of the time, yeah, we were delivering the check on.
When we picked up.
When we picked up the vehicles.
Okay.
Cut by the head.
The, the, the goal would be, is that if we, if we accounted for the three ambulances, two we did not purchase this year, you know, so if we say one last year, one we didn't purchase this year, and then another one in the delay in year build time, the goal would be after those three, it would be one ambulance per year, so we would get ourselves out of bulk purchases.
We did have three hundred and ninety thousand budgeted in 2021 that was not expended on ambulances.
Okay. But, but one a year is, is one a year a, past enough replacement for, that keeps some, one of them in there for fourteen years or something like that, isn't it?
That, that's the other piece that we can analyze, is how many reserve ambulances we actually need to, to keep. I would say that we're pretty close on the number, but until we get into a deep dive on how often those are being utilized and, and what the turnover rate is, I think sufficiently one a year hopefully will be. The other piece that I'd like to just bring forward a little bit is that capital items for the current fiscal year, due to the change and transition time, a large majority of that money has not been spent either. So there would be a large carry forward into this year, if we do not end up spending that in the next thirty days.
Technically, technically, if there's not a purchase order out there, that really doesn't get carried forward in that line, it just gets carried forward in contingency.
The list of items that were budgeted for this year, most of those have not been purchased, so I'm gonna give you a look. I only listed out the ones that happened. I have to pull up, we pulled last. up the last year's list.
So that's kind of an ever-changing list, it seems like, because different things become different priorities. I kind of tell you the same thing with token processors. You got this pot of money, and once you blow through it, you know, it's, when you get to the candy store and use it all up, then that's where you're at. So I've got an old list of our ambulances and the miles. I just, I was thinking we were more like on a two-per-year replacement, and to Harry's thought about that too, so we might want to visit about that. Maybe it's not aggressive enough or too aggressive. Kind of leave that up to you, but.
I think, again, there are so many factors in play of what does staffing look like? What does call volume look like? What does transfer work between here and our, you know, larger facilities in Columbia or St. Louis, Kansas City? What does that volume look like? And I think those are all waxing and waning variables in place. So, you know, it, there, I don't want to get locked in and say it will be one a year moving forward. That would be my intention. But, you know, on the off chance that we do have a couple that need to go, you know, maybe it's two. But, you know, I'd really like to get into a cycle where we're not buying four, three at a time.
Well, I mean, our ambulances, one-on-one through like one-on-seven, we're pretty high mileage already. And it seems like we've got a little behind on purchases this year, so. Yeah, okay.
Well, yeah.
The other piece looking forward is there could be some potential, depending on which road we go down with the new purchases of remounting, and which would be removing the box from one chassis and placing it on another.
Correct, yeah. Yep. We could get one of them old ones and make a shuttle out of it for the jurors.
Our station and ambulance at the top of the hill to see if some of the jurors made it or didn't.
I've been to meetings now at City Hall and hoofed it back up here, too. That's not a fun hill.
No.
Especially in the winter. That would snow or ice on the ground.
Can you stop the traffic down there on McCarty and we could just?
Well, usually the cars slamming into each other.
So of this list up here.
You can read that?
Yes.
New CAT system, dispatch status.
Yeah, so the new CAT system has not been purchased. The base radio replacement has not been accomplished. The AVTEC dispatch console has not been ordered. The only thing that we have really gotten off of that list is about, what was that, eleven thousand dollars for the incident command mid temp control unit? So.
Was that the total cost of that?
Yes, that was the total cost. It was eleven thousand.
Not thirty-six?
Correct.
Okay. There are a few more things down lower, but I think most of those were open purchase orders at the end of the year.
One thing that I do want to put on the radar is I've had some preliminary discussions with Osage Fire. It is their goal in the next coming year to remodel the station there in Wardsville. Been told that it was the understanding that when we put the ambulance there, those quarters were temporary, in the understanding that when they did do their rebuild, that we would reevaluate that. So while I do not have any more information on that, that conversation has been started.
I think it always was temporary. I think we've always revisited, and I knew they were looking at building out. But I think that everybody, us included, wanted to keep something out there if we can.
One hundred percent.
So I think that's where they're at, is we might have to do some little remodeling or moving them. So, yeah.
I think that the goal would be, is that they would like us to stay in their facility. They would like to explore making a more complex, tailored area for us as they make that bill.
Yeah, I mean, we've made use of some area that maybe is not as private or away from their stuff. I think that's where they'd like to go with it, so.
And, you know, there's no dedicated bathroom in that facility. Crew's got to walk across the station and all of those sorts of things. So there is some opportunity there.
Yeah, I think that's an essential station, so, yeah. Yes.
Anything else?
Oh, Eric was just leaving. Sorry, chief.
That's all right.
Make sure you get some, though.
Thank you.
Thank you, Eric. You're doing a great job.
You didn't let David come up today? Tell him we missed him. Well, tell him we didn't miss him then. He's on vacation. Bye, golly.
It's not a bribe, is it?
I can't hear me.
I'm hoping.
What? Not with me.
Oh, I looked it up, I guess.
Shall I?
I like this one-page stuff here.
Yeah, here's a stack from.
Mine's real quick, in order to act, if you just want to agree to it, we don't even have to talk about it. We hit that high.
Don't ever do that with this year.
So there's a, we agree with the budget that the company's come up with. I do have some changes. I did talk these over.
Sorry, we start on one-on-two as goes multiple pieces.
Well, it's one-on-one as a start, because that's where my capital is. So, and we'll talk about that at the end. But I do have six changes to make, and I've talked to Kristin already, and she was good with it. But anyway, so the very first one is to change our revenue. The law enforcement sales tax, it came in in November, it was like seven-three-one-twelve, but I don't know, or seven-three-twelve, seven-three-one-twelve. But so we agreed to bring that up, a hundred thousand, and then.
So just real quickly, we should have that final summer payment of sales tax hopefully next week. So we will have exact dollar amount of what that is going to mean for the year.
Okay. So we've talked about this in a three-way conversation several times, and it was if, 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 and it looks like the ifs are happening. The numbers are.
Yes. So right now, we're at six-six-four-two. So depending on what that final payment is, we've always taken the approach that we will do actual into next year of what this year is. So we should have that actual figure by next week.
So increasing that to seven-three, and then on surplus property line number four-six-seven-eight-nine on the revenue, increase that to ten thousand. We've, and we're going to go way past thirty thousand, but I feel comfortable with ten. Increase federal prisoners, fifty thousand, because of the amount of prisoners that we've been holding. And then increase the contracts for a new SRO on the revenue side. So that's one of the things down the bottom that we're asking for, is an extra SRO for Blair Oaks. Blair Oaks has agreed to pay half the salary of this person, so. And then under the expenditure side, decrease the nine-one-one payment from three-hundred-and-thirteen-thousand to two-hundred-and-seventy-six, which would be a savings of meaning for about thirty-seven thousand. The reason why, whenever we first did this, I was at about twenty-eight thousand calls for service, and I'm roughing it. And EMS was around twelve, and now we're about twenty, twenty-one thousand, and EMS is around thirteen thousand, I think you all did. Is that right, Eric? Twelve to thirteen? So it, I tried to get him to go half and half. Eric did not have anything to do with that one, so it was a good shot. So anyway, so what my proposal is, is we do thirds. I'll pay two-thirds, you pay the third. And then the last is decrease the training, the fifteen thousand on five-three-two-six-five. And that fifteen thousand dollars was specifically for to send jailers to get post-certified. But with the ARPA funds, it's one of the authorized items that we can spend money on. Not only do they pay for the scholarship to go to L E T I or Lincoln, but it would also pay their salary wherever they're to. So it's an amount that we can, we don't have to have. In return, the funds below is what I'm wanting, what I'm asking for this year. A lieutenant's position for professional standards, it's about seventy-five thousand dollars. This person's going to, they're going to be doing quite a few things, but they'll be helping with policy writing and review, and then work towards Kalia accreditation. So the state and the federal government is coming down to where they're going to make all law enforcement agencies be accredited. It's expensive, to say the least. To start out with just to be Kalia certified, it's going to cost us about twelve thousand dollars a year. Once we get Kalia certified, to get there, it's going to cost them money. We have to go through every one of our policies and get them in a format that's agreeable with Kalia. So they have some standards that we have to meet with them. We don't have an individual that I would be able to put in that position and be able to, it's not an extra duty. This is going to be something that somebody's going to have to sit down, and that's all they're going to do for probably a year. And then a part-time salary increase of four percent. We haven't given my part-time staff any kind of a salary increase in a while, so we want to do a four percent to coincide with COLA. And then merit raise. I know not everybody likes the merit raise. We are different when it comes to merit. Our staff works off of productivity, and there's good and bad productivity. So we have to, we have to look at the method of the productivity they have. Some of the productivity I'm talking about, our tickets, car stops, follow-ups, special duty details, preventative actions, special training, court demeanor, complaints, customer service. These are, it's all, it's a huge plethora of things that my staff are required to do. And depending on how well they do it, the way that we're able to use positive reinforcement to ensure that they're going the direction we need to, part of that is by merit. I would actually like to have more than a one percent merit, but I think one percent is fair. And again, we have the money, so. And not everybody will get the same amount of money. Our valuations are set up on one through a five, one through five. So if someone is really putting forth the effort and doing what they're supposed to do, they're going to get a higher number. Those that are not are going to get a lower number. Number four, the SRO for Blair Oaks, they approached me on that. Blair Oaks is getting so spread out with so many people, you know, it just makes sense to have another SRO out there. And again, they're paying for half of it. Jail detective, so about two years ago, I was swindled by a guy sitting in the front in a uniform over against the wall over there. And so they came up with this idea, and I went along with it. I didn't think it would really go that far, but it's actually turned into a great position. The individual who put in there was the perfect person to put in there. She's done an outstanding job, so much so that I agree that we need a second one. The jail detective position is able to look at the assaults that occur in the jail, so it doesn't take away from my staff that's actually working the jail. This person can look at, can help look at these assaults, can look at if somebody, we just had someone fall off the top bunk and said, and they said they had a seizure. We're able to review the video and make sure that, you know, that's not always what's happening. So it would be an asset to us to be able to have that. And then the last one is increase our training funds, you know, and I think I've heard a couple people say this already, training, I'm a big believer in training, and unfortunately, training comes at a cost. So, and training is going up. So we need to be able to send people to get more certification and more training. So that's basically all I have. Do you have questions before we go into capital improvements?
I just comment on the dispatch name real quick. So current configuration is seventy-five-twenty-five. For us, they answer the call, transfer it to us if it's a medical emergency. While I understand that we are a user of that service, and there is a request for us to increase our payment, we have not had any change in the service delivered. So whatever, whatever you all decide is whatever you all decide. However, just, we haven't done anything to reevaluate that payment piece. The other more far-reaching thing is that this is another reason to explore our alternative options, because, you know, I, there has to be a more cost-effective service.
Did you say your call was from twenty-eight thousand to twenty-one thousand?
Yeah, twenty-eight, well, like twenty-seven-six, and it's down to twenty-one, I think twenty-one-four is what we're looking at this year. The problem, the problem is, is.
Well, it went down. I didn't see that as a problem.
Well, it's not a problem going down. The problem we have is the time we're having to spend on the calls now, because number one, the complexity of crimes have gone up, number one. Number two, some of the crimes, the type of crimes that are occurring have gone up quite a bit, so we have to spend more time on it. So we're spending, even though we have less calls for service, we're spending more time per call because of this. There's a sense of, there's a sense of entitlement and lawlessness, not by everybody, but the five percent of the people that we deal with. There's a sense of lawlessness and entitlement that they don't really have to listen to us and stuff like that. So our staff is having to talk more. We're having to do, because of the law changes, because of the complexity of the crimes, we're having to do more follow-up investigations. So it's taking more time on these cases than what it did in the past. And the numbers are starting to creep back up.
Yeah, I mean, I was just looking at the numbers, and, you know, we were at EMS was more, I guess it was closer to the thirty percent, and that's why we did kind of a twenty-five-seventy-five. And now we're more at a thirty-eight percent, if you're going by those numbers. So, I mean, I could see that as a justification for it. Good gesture from Eric to get any good graces with you, some pie.
I mean, supporting the nine-one-one system, if that's what needs to happen, to support the nine-one-one system for the community.
Yes. That's what it is. And that's another, a separate conversation that we need to have about before what he's talking about. So.
Yes, I've been talking with the mayor of Jefferson City as well. So it's, that's, yeah.
Do you have any information on the call numbers that you can share? I mean, we'd like to see that kind of stuff and maybe track over time, what that call volume looks like.
I can't give a T today. I can't give. You mean like per month?
Or even just yearly, so we can see what that call volume looks like over time.
So calls for service?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's not a problem. I didn't.
And I mean, if yours go up this year and EMS goes down, I mean, we may have to make an adjustment next year and go back to seventy-five-twenty-five.
Mine actually went up from last year. So mine's starting to go up.
Oh, so we should charge you more for nine-one-one.
I'm good with that. I think it should be, he should pay seventy-five percent, but when I brought that up.
Dispatch. Yep, okay.
Sheriff, do you, you act as almost like the city cop in about six or seven jurisdictions? Is that fair to say? I mean, because they don't have their own. So if it's a speed limit issue and they.
Jeff City. I mean, we.
Well, forget Jeff City. We can't, but let's.
Well, I agree, because we work inside Jeff City, too.
Yeah, but for discussion purposes, whether it's Lowman, Centertown, Russellville, and Wardsville, and so on and so forth. Eugene's disincorporated, so.
Still got to respond there.
Okay, but.
You're talking about incorporated.
Yeah, for the most part incorporated. So you're the speed trap, if there is one.
There is no such thing as speed trap, sir.
Okay. Well, there.
No, we are responsible for all of the criminal violation, traffic code and all that in all the county, except for Jefferson City.
Got it. Okay.
But with our civil, we encompass the whole county with civil, and of course, prisoners are jailed. We're going to hit fifty, I can't think of the number right now. I want to say fifty-eight-hundred, I think, is how many people we're going to end up processing in our jail this year, which is, it was, it was like fifty-two-hundred last year. It was six thousand three years ago, sixty-one, sixty-one-twenty-eight or something like that. So my numbers in the jail are creeping up again.
Well, I think a better stat would be jail days. In other words, you know, if one prisoner stays seven days, that's seven jail days.
That's correct.
So rather than one, you know, one stays seven, one stays two, if you're just counting prisoners, that's not, you can't really tell. I'm curious as to what your jail days are, if that's the right terminology.
And Chuck, too, because I think, you know, I had talked to somebody from the Department of Corrections, and they're under the impression that we are caught up on the payments that they, what they owe us.
I think they are.
They are.
Okay, good.
Right now, they are.
Okay.
The problem is the law that was passed last year says, so, in other words, they're going to say, we have this much money set to pay you guys. Once that's gone, it's gone.
But we were lucky enough to have our ducks in a row and had submitted the expense.
Come September, October, they'll run out of money, and then no one gets reimbursed until then. I believe is the way they have it set up now.
Well, they, I mean, they have an annual appropriation for that.
Right, but.
They're going to run out more like March, April, which they're June thirty year end. Now, they're gonna run out more like March, April, which they're six thirty, June thirty year end.
June, yeah, I'm sorry, yeah, yeah.
Right. Uh, and, but they could do supplemental to take care of that.
Well, I think the law that they passed said they're not gonna do that anymore. They said it, that, uh, I can't remember how the law was written, but it said it...
It's something about current funding, like...
It can't go any less than what it was.
What it current funding was or something.
Okay.
So, they're, but they're, they're trying to wean away from, and that's, that's a shame because what they're doing is they're forcing Cole County citizens to pay for all these state prisoners when they come here. And that's, that's not, that's not fair. So, if, um, for instance, if, uh, if I get arrested and go to jail, uh, the only way I get reimbursed is if I get found guilty of a felony and I go to...
The big house.
I have to go to Gretchen's. If I'm in jail for a year and a half waiting for trial and they come up and say, uh, yes, you're guilty, but we're gonna give you time, sir. Cole County citizens just funded that. They don't pay nothing. Now, we try to go after the inmates. I think we're not, we're not very successful in that. Are we, I mean, we, we get a little bit of money from them, but I don't think we're very successful in getting some of that money back, but we're trying.
Well, they've been out of work for a year. That's, might be hard to collect from...
Well, and then, I mean, we, and we don't expect them to pay it upfront, but we do want them to set up a payment plan or something. We are trying to, uh, I think we have worked out a deal where we're going with the Department of Revenue and trying to, uh, tag some of their taxes whenever they get refunds.
And their lottery.
And lottery, that's right, that's right. So, uh, so we're, those are some of the things that we're trying to do to recoup some of this money that, uh, that we're paying out. The citizens of Cole County are paying out. Uh, real quick, I can go over the, uh, capital request. I do have a, I do have two changes, um, in what's in here that I haven't talked to anybody about. But if you look at page one-on-one, it says right there, two-hundred-and-eighty-thousand. Well, of course, with the expenditure we just paid of the one-sixty-five for something, uh, that's gonna be reduced to a hundred-and-fifteen thousand or whatever that's gonna end up being. Uh, and then, uh, the only other one that we're gonna change is the very bottom one, Lexi Poll. Uh, if we put twenty-four thousand, that's actually thirty-four thousand. So, I changed, I actually, well, thirty-four thousand, five hundred. So, I put, I changed that to thirty-five on my sheet. I don't know, hopefully you guys will agree to that. Um, Lexi Poll is, uh, is the software program we're going to for our policies. So, they have, uh, five hundred different policies, uh, in their system. And what we do is we'll send them our current policies and they'll change them into, uh, Lexi Poll policies or try to. And then they'll send them back to us and then we have to go through them individually and make those changes, the appropriate changes to curtail them to our organization. That's what's gonna take so long. Uh, the, the other ones here, if you go down and look at them, they're mainly the same things we do every year. The only things I can't tell you about is the computers. That's a Brian thing. He said that's how much we need, so I said, okay. And then, uh, the router upgrade, I have no idea what that is, but Brian says we need it, it's five thousand dollars. So, that's why I put that in there. Uh, the radar units we have, you can see, uh, that's the first time we've done that in a long time. But there were some of the radar units we have are twelve, uh, ten, twelve years old. Uh, the body cameras, uh, we're just trying to stay on top of, uh, making sure we're rotating our good body cameras out for the, uh, our, our older ones for our good ones and some of those that are getting outdated. And then the other one I was gonna talk to you about was the radar trailer. You see, it's ten thousand dollars. This is something that Public Works and I have been talking about probably for the last three years. And finally, I just pulled the trigger and put it in my capital improvements and, uh, they have agreed, Brian and Eric have agreed that if, uh, if we purchase it, then they will maintain it, which is probably pretty good. I don't know if you want deputies taking care of the radar trailer, but, uh, but what we'll do is we'll let them hold on to it. But we'll also talk with them before we purchase it so they can help us spec it out. It'll be able to do, uh, speed cams and, uh, you know, all, all the stuff that they need done and they'll be able to move it around too. Uh, depending on the, the, uh, the unit that we buy and how much money we can, uh, that we'll be able to utilize for it. It's a, it can be Bluetooth, so you can get immediate action. There'll be a GPS device on it, so no one can steal it. Unfortunately, you gotta worry about that kind of stuff.
Is, is this the, the, the display that tells you the, the driver, as you go by, you're four miles, ten miles, fifteen miles over limit?
And some of them have cameras. Now, there's not nothing that we could do that would be able to, to, uh, like, uh, any kind of criminology that we couldn't take them to court and...
So, you can't give me a ticket by trying to get bias number?
Nope, no, can't do that anymore. But what we can...
I wouldn't do that, I'm just kidding.
If we had some people that are being stupid seeing how high they can get it going, they would definitely get our attention.
Okay.
Just keep it out on Henwick. I think I get more complaints about the speeding out, out in Harry's district.
I get, uh, we get speeding complaints, uh, year-round, uh, I would say weekly. And what we try to do is we try to move the deputies around as much as possible, but we, we're down three in patrol location now. So, out of my twenty call takers, I'm down three. So, uh, we try to move them around as much as we can, but, and we'll show up and we'll slow everybody down for a little bit, but then we move them to the next place and they start speeding up over there, so. And we're always cognizant of the schools. We try to, always try to keep people around the schools just in case, uh, uh, 'cause we wanna make sure that...
So, you'll have one neighbor that calls and says, hey, can you come in and slow people down? And then you got your other neighbors that are ticked off because they, why are they out here hounding us?
That's exactly right.
Well, call your other neighbor and say you're driving too fast.
When I was a school resource officer at Lewis and Clark, I came, this, it was the beginning of the year and the teachers came to me and said, the parents are driving too fast, you gotta slow them down. Well, let's get some of your, your, your people over here. And I said, well, let me monitor it for a couple of days and then I'll see what's going on. They wanted it, so we brought in traffic unit. And there, I don't remember how many tickets, it was like fifteen tickets written. 'Cause when you ask for direct enforcement, that's part of direct enforcement, isn't it, right? You issue some of this. Well, the problem was, I think nine of them were teachers. It's a, it's a, it's a, you know, it's a fine line you're walking and you say people are speeding and you come. So, if we show up and we're working an area because people are complaining and speeding, we don't, we don't have glasses on that says, you know, good guy, bad guy. They, they react to those. But we are not a traffic-oriented organization though, never will be. We just don't have staffing for it, nor do we, so...
I've got three locations for you in the western side of the county.
Yeah, more complaints.
I'm hoping to start out with one of these trailers and, and then I'm hoping to get a second one. I'd like to have two of them, so...
So, uh, was I talking to you or was it Public Works? I, I think they're actually gonna be getting more signs up going down Osage City, 'cause we talked about this earlier this week.
Yeah.
I thought we already had all them up, but they were waiting on some things, so hopefully...
But you said it yesterday, Jeff. The problem is that they're either, I don't wanna say they don't know how to read, but they're not paying attention. They're looking at their screen because they're all-knowing and wise. GPS says they can drive down there, so that's how they try to go. I don't know, I don't know if we're fixed to that. We put signs up, but I, I don't know if we're fixed to that.
Well, they got some more they're gonna be putting up, so hopefully that'll help a little bit. It's weird, 'cause we don't, we won't have any for several months and then you have three or four.
Well, I think you have some of your normal drivers that get caught up on this, so they don't have to go there anymore. Then you get new drivers and they have to go down there and find this out, so...
And they're gonna be putting them up on one-seventy-nine?
Did they have to unload that one?
Uh, you know what? I never followed up on that. I don't know if they had to, but it was, he got so far off in the ditch that the, the, the bar on the back of the trailer was in the, was in the pavement. So, I, I don't think there's a, a tow truck out there if it was, if it was packed up. I don't know if there's a truck that could be able to pull that out there.
Yep, geez. And then they're putting signs on one-seventy-nine going on at Tanner Bridge too for the big truck limit on that, so...
Yep.
Hopefully that'll take care of some of those.
Do you have any questions or be able to answer any, or anybody here have any question to be able to answer?
What was the MDTs again on your capital?
Mobile Data Terminal.
Yeah, Mobile Data Terminal.
Okay, thank you.
So, and we're getting to the point where, uh, some of those are getting old.
You only get the money if you know what the acronym stands for, you really do.
I understand. Well, you know, the bad part is, is, and I was laughing about this, 'cause they came up with it the other day. So, the nine-eleven commission, when they came out and talked about nine-eleven, one of the things they said was we had to get rid of ten codes because, uh, ten codes are confusing. Some agencies have a different ten code, means something else. So, they said, and that's what we do, we talk plain on, on the radio, now we don't use ten codes. But then we turn around and we upped our ante on using acronyms. So, I, I don't know where we, we helped all that much there. We gotta start thinking about that. And I don't think about it. Somebody else's civilian actually brought up to me and said, yeah, you guys killed me on these acronyms and so...
Do you guys have anything else?
I don't think so.
Thank you.
If you would like to take a small break, I do have pie.
Uh, we do have a few minutes. We're trying to call prosecutor's office there, they're on the list and not scheduled for a while, so we do have a few minutes.
Then I just, let's take a short break and eat pie.
Thanks, Easter Bunny.
Thanks, Easter Bunny. Buck, buck!
What do you have?
You know, I have tickets on, I have several on last year, but I do have some left over for some of the guys that I had bought, so last year...
You only buy us a narrow, why do we put this in?
They're buying narrow, yeah. Yeah, so, yes, let me know.
I don't know.
I can shoot you an email too, send it out to him or something. That way you can send it, but they're interested in Ason, that... Yeah, I've, I've got a few. I'm gonna turn that next Thursday, next weekend, so... I know it's actually, I've been sold and spoken for by now and I'm trying to scramble and find everyone, but I do have some left in...
Got you. Yeah, I'll, I'll check around, 'cause like I said, I know Labor Services did. But I was out, I took a week's vacation, I was trying to get some...
You have a lot?
No, I didn't, but I didn't really, uh, just didn't see nothing. I saw a lot of deer, you know, just...
I only shot one the second weekend, didn't see this.
Oh, did you?
Yeah, there's a, I said, hey, it's probably about one-twenty, we don't have any. This is my first one since two thousand fourteen. I didn't realize you got that telecheck. I was going to go in and I was like, two thousand fourteen since I shot that animal with a fire horn. There, so I was like, okay, I don't feel so bad now, dude. It was a bird going down. It was nice, I watched it for a while. If he would've kept walking and been on through, he would've been free and let go and drove, but I was like, okay.
Hey, you never know, they're gonna get them, you know, G4s the next year.
He was, he was a healthy one. He had, he had previous, it was full. Always not missing any meals, so usually that's why I'm wanting to stop down there for like this, this is important.
Yeah, yeah, they, whatever you think, a lot of people sell to the straw plant down there too, so...
Yeah, there's probably some, uh, coal were established down there, I put some in last year, it's coming up again. Tried to drop a few of those, send it out a little bit, so...
Yeah, they say you're supposed to do that, you know, management-wise now, I don't know, I'm not the, uh, so that's man, deer manager, but I believe so.
It depends on what you wanna leave.
Yeah, true.
Just sit there, play the stand once, you let it touch you. You see this mascot, young, but is that all he's ever been, or is he gonna be a monster?
Yeah, that a cold comfort, uh, potential one thing to ask you. So, I don't know. I know one thing, I always try to, I like to save my, uh, rifle template for a little bit, because sometimes I get a group that moves in, but who knows? Actually, we have really had much, me and my station, my buddy, we've done farm like eight years ago.
That's amazing.
Yeah, actually, we started there, we're in Calhoun, and first couple of years, we didn't have anything, we've been to a few, like, since then. Clearly helped, we've seen a lot of deer, but, uh, we have an extra shot. We actually have a couple of thirties.
You got a lot of, uh, I have fourteen on, I guess, uh, where they all, sort of, uh, bedding out bedding areas and stuff?
Not like, uh, your, uh, when you come to summer grasses, you're like, you're tall, more just...
You got a lot of forest?
Yeah, oh yeah, it's like nice.
So, I talked to a couple of people, they mentioned that, uh, go in, uh, and hedge cattle everywhere, so...
Yeah, I have seen that.
Do some of that, so they, and, I wanted to clean all of it, it just seemed like I actually helped them and they liked it, so...
So, the people you talked to, they, 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 like, your work, you said, laid out?
Yeah, uh, America, it's huge on there. You put certain, uh, grasses on the edge of your field, uh, what do you call it? You know, that's you or something like that, must get a big tall one, but, you know, then some of it they'll cut every third year. So, when you're mowing your, your field and stuff, so, it's more of a bedding than it is...
Jeffrey?
Yes, research.
So, we should buy?
Food resource, so... But yeah, that was like, we got plenty of bedding areas, not eating one really, so that's why I'm concerned about getting...
Forty-five dollars for the pie, some of it is...
Last thing though, you don't get a tree deer every year. That's one of the troubles.
Yes, we'll get some pie for forty-five dollars.
Pie, what do you think, is Thanksgiving? Hey, happy birthday! How you doing, Eric? Should you be off on your birthday?
Right. Your boss is a jerk. Good?
Oh, you got ice cream with it?
It's warm.
You got ice cream with it?
Yeah, that's what I said. I said, if you're gonna do warm pie, I want ice cream.
If it's warm, eh?
Eric said if you're gonna find ice cream, I don't know what I...
You get that one up.
You just got money out. They haven't agreed to it yet. They didn't disagree, but they didn't agree to it. Hey, Eric, you're stealing a piece of property.
Put candles on it, so we can say happy birthday.
Thank you.
I feel you had to let Jerry see off today on his birthday.
Don't it work? We're buying pie for your birthday. We're picking a pie.
Hey, I see that.
Help yourself if you would like.
Oh, okay. I spent forty-five dollars on pie here. Did you?
Is it good?
Yeah, Burke's pie, dude, it's good.
How you doing, Mr. Lo?
Doing well, how are you?
Doing all right. You all staying pretty busy, huh?
Never not busy.
Never not busy.
You guys want a piece of pie? I think the sheriff is doing a little bribing there, but it worked.
Sounded like it.
It's good.
Chuck, did you need another pen? I saw you shaking your one.
She got me.
Okay.
Which one do you guys wanna do first?
I think we'll start with Sarah.
Okay.
I don't think we'll take very long.
Okay.
About forty-five minutes each?
That's a little...
If, if that happens, I'm actually just walking out. You can do mine as well.
I didn't know it was Tracy's birthday today.
I didn't either.
Uh, yeah. Please do, no, no.
No.
Good morning, Sam.
Good morning, how are you?
Doing well, how are you?
Oh.
Which one you wanna do first, Chuck, it's worth it. Seventy-one, Harry.
Okay.
Really?
Yeah.
You have any trouble? I have a question, three, five. I have a, I have a, it's broken, I have to watch.
I was gonna have to do during the last... Trying to get Jeff not, and get there, go up here.
Yeah, that would be nice, and I'll...
Gatherman here.
Oh, that was good.
Do that next week.
Who? I'm sorry.
I get a little excited about some of this stuff. I just found the exact...
Seventy-one, Harry.
Seventy-one, Harry. When I wrote, I'm gonna be a detective.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, yes, back to November one through twelve thirty-one. And then we're gonna reevaluate the last, uh, commission.
Come on Jeffrey.
Um, yes, I think what we're gonna do is place the time you. So like if you have to use six hours, I think we're gonna re-inspare. We're gonna relay the way.
Early next year.
Yeah, well, seven.
Very good.
Strapping's next Wednesday, Thursday, we need to have pie breaks.
Yeah.
When we're here twelve thirty. We should be no laps, we work through ten thirty-one and Tuesday Wednesday.
We're seventy-one in the middle.
Seventy-one.
Uh, yes, and the never ending day.
I, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday.
Tuesday, Wednesday.
Thanks, sir.
Thanks, John.
Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday.
Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday.
Wednesday, Thursday. Just regular commission meeting Tuesday, right?
I had Tuesday, it's just being a regular commission.
Not budget on there?
If necessary. Yeah, we got budget on. If.
If necessary.
How would you know if it's necessary on Tuesday till we get down to Wednesday and Thursday?
Is that Tuesday, next Tuesday, or is that the following Tuesday? No, that's the fourth, it's the seventh.
Sorry.
She's looking at a fourteen.
I was trying to add something.
I was gonna say next Tuesday, I just have very good commission.
Okay, so just Wednesday.
Wednesday, Thursday. Okay. Are we ready?
Yep.
I think so. We're gonna start with child support. So, do you guys have any changes to what was proposed or?
Page seventy-one.
No, no changes to what was proposed, except for the changes that you made specifically because my math is bad. But, uh, so none from what you did. But the only difference really in child support from last year to this year was last year it asked for about seven thousand dollars for carpe l to do, to become paperless. But about the point that COVID was being to my, where I could actually implement that by speaking to them and going to see how the program works. They ended the child support carpe l program, so it wasn't used. So I may be coming back next year or to ask for that money again when they have implemented the new child support program, but right now they don't have one. So I didn't use it last year and I'm not asking for it this year. I think the only other change was, um, some changes in salaries. And there's some money that appears to not be getting used fully like for meetings and travels and dues and for mileage. And that's basically because a lot of this year, uh, a lot of our stuff was still virtual. I was still able to appear for a lot of court appearances virtually and for all my CLEs virtually, but that will not happen this year, so.
And as you can see on their budget, they're fully funded.
Yes, I like that.
Yeah. One of, uh.
I circled that.
Okay.
And I think right now the only salary increases that are in there is the four percent COLA. I know you guys said ask for merit money, but right now, but all that's in that line is the four percent COLA.
But I could also add that we are fully funded, we, our budget right now, that's probably the same as more so.
And supporter in any, you know, additional four percent raise what you're asking for per employee, that would be supportive of that. I did it a little differently for mine. I think I just asked for a, some to give out merit raises as I felt appropriate, um, and adjust salaries as needed. I think that we've had quite a bit of turnover in our office over the past few months. And just in the interest of keeping those who are here, who are great employees for us, who are doing things like coming in over there, staying late, coming on weekends routinely. I just thought it would be good to finally be able to give some merit raises out there. I know that we've usually just been doing the COLA and I'm trying to get creative on occasion with ways to be able to move money around, had other people leave or retire, things like that, but I, this year I just went ahead and asked for a sum for the prosecutor's office.
But I think in terms of merit based salaries for child support like this downstairs or like this anywhere in the county, obviously, uh, we take a lot of time to train people. And so once they get a handle on it, they're good, they can be really, really good. And I know at least this year we've lost, um, the secretary that had been the assistant in the child support area for ten years. We lost her to family support division because they were able to give her a significant amount of money than she was making here. And it was a huge loss to us. And someone else has taken her position and it's really catching up. It's taking, it's taking a while, it's not quite.
Well, she was there for ten years, right?
Yes, and so not quite to speed, but you know, these merit based raises are in order to keep these people once they're trained and in the position and not losing them to state offices and other locations.
We've had probably in the last four months fifty percent turnover with our attorneys in the criminal unit. That's why I'm asking for that amount of money, so I can give raises where appropriate to keep some folks here.
That's the hundred and four thousand difference, Kristen, between department requested and what you had in prosecutors. Uh, page seventy-nine is, I jumped over to. You're talking in general, right?
Sorry, I was, I was kinda going.
Child support.
I guess we just combined.
What difference are you talking about?
In the salaries.
Yeah, so he, he had asked for seventy-five thousand dollars in merit money.
Seventy-five, okay.
Uh, yeah, and the part-time changed significantly because he brought on a part-time attorney um, this, this year.
I adjusted one of our, what is, what was an open full-time position to a part-time position.
Does that seem to work out better?
Um, that one specifically is working out better. Uh, that assistant prosecutor's doing all our traffic stuff, a lot of the miscellaneous misdemeanor stuff, high volume stuff, but it's not like super complex usually, so she's able to, in fact, she came to me the other day and was like, you can give me a few more cases here and there because I'm, you know, keeping up with that. Um, part-time's good for maybe one, but when you're talking about handling like a felony caseload and things like that, it really does need to, that's why Angie, we switched her from part-time to full-time was just because of the kind of cases she was working, she wasn't able to deal with the, with the part-time. Without exceeding her.
That's what I was gonna say. If that seems to work better in certain things, that might be something to look at in the future, but if it's not as desired for the, the other bigger case.
And I have no issue keeping that, uh, that way. Um, with regard to the traffic stuff, at least for now, you know, as long as this new person wants to stick around and do that part-time, that's great. Um, it, it seems to be working very well. But yeah, for a different caseload, it probably wouldn't be very practical.
So, there is one thing in Locke's budget that's a little concerning for my side, and that's he has three grant funded positions currently, and we have not received verification that those grants will be extended. They were both up for renewal this year. Um, so two victim advocates in an attorney position are grant funded through, um, Vawa and Boca.
Right.
We have taken the assumption when we presented the budget that we would get approval for those grants, but, um, those three people are grant funded positions. So if that revenue is not there, um.
Could create an issue.
So when do we know, when would?
You know, I will, I will double check on that today. I'd almost forgotten about it until you mentioned it, but I'll, I mean, I know that.
Vawa usually is like January, February.
Right.
Uh, Boca, I think should've been September, but.
But they had a huge delay last year too. Um, or two years ago, whenever it was. Um, so I will, I will check on that if you guys can send me an email. Um, just confirming where we're at with that. But, uh, yeah, I, I know that with the Vawa stuff, that was Miranda was doing all that. She has since left, but, um, my understanding was normally once you get it, you pretty much keep it. Um, so I, I don't have any concerns, real concerns about it, but I guess it is a possibility.
Yeah.
Worst case.
Worst case scenario, those three grants have been generating X dollars?
Yeah, so you see them on the revenue side under grants and reimbursements, about, it's about a hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars.
Okay.
And those three positions are included in the salary line currently.
Right.
I don't have any more questions.
Okay.
Cool.
Thank you.
Thank you.
No, we don't.
Just, uh.
I think Donnell's the last one. Yeah, we're waiting for her. She was scheduled for eleven, so we're a few minutes ahead.
Hope you gave this to me because I've been writing it. Did you really? Okay.
She's on page sixty-three.
It should've been. This has been quite a learning experience. I mean, I've worked on small budgets, private industry, things like this.
Um, while we're waiting, if you want to look at EMS sales tax, so Eric kinda went over, um, his capital items, there are a few other things that come out of, um, that fund that we didn't really touch on, so I didn't know if you guys had any questions. It's page one thirteen. So a few other things that come out of there is the contributions to the first responders. Um, we give twenty-five thousand to the city of Jefferson and we give twenty-five thousand to, um, the Cole County first responders. Um, that is where the EMS portion of nine-one-one comes out of. So if you would decide to adjust the sheriff's portion, the offset is in, um, that capital fund. And then we do have a capital lease in there that we're still paying for the cots. I think we're now to another two years on that lease before those cots are paid off.
Those vegetable strikers.
Uh, it's a five, it's a five-year lease.
Excuse me, thank you.
I'm sneezing, I'm sorry.
Um, that, we own them after the five years, but it's a five-year lease.
Are these fif- are these fifty thousand dollar items?
Uh, they were, yes, um, I don't know off the top of my head what the original cost was. We pay a hundred and twenty-two thousand, six hundred dollars every year over five years.
Okay.
I don't remember the exact number we bought either.
How many?
Cause we were in the transition there to where we bought a couple with the ambulances or the tracks and things, and then we replaced all the ones we had currently and we, I think, traded in a few or sold a few, I don't know. There was a lot going on at that point, guys. But just, so you guys had it ended up those items were in there as well. And then that transfer fund in there is the big, big one, and that's the sixty percent that goes to general fund for the offset of property taxes. Um, we have the supplement to the operational fund in EMS, that transfer as well. And then, um, some other smaller things like their admin fee and, um, rent payment comes out of that transfer line.
So, on the top line, it's seven point two.
Yep.
Sixty percent of that is inside the five point four below?
Yes.
Okay, and then there's other things that make up the difference.
Yeah, so all of the transfers from that fund to other things come out of that one account, so I can bring up the detail if you want to see it.
Well, there's about four point two is, is the, the sixty percent, there's another one point two of something.
Yeah, so there, there's a little over a million dollars that goes into the EMS operational fund to balance their budget. And then two smaller transfers, admin fee and a, a rent payment. Is Donnell underway though?
This stack gets as big as the door. It's close.
Just think, Sam, this is the stack that I got originally when everyone's running their budget.
On your web page, Mr. Donnell, on the.
She's sixty-three.
Mm-hmm, it's good. Very sweet.
Mmm, buttery.
I am one of those people that doesn't understand when people are like, that's too sweet. What does that mean?
What does that mean?
Feel that way about icing.
I see.
I see.
I can, yeah. Take that off.
Just scrape it off. Maybe like, don't throw that away.
Save that.
It's still warm though.
Yes.
I mean, we could start Tuesday after the commission meeting.
Like how much does that start?
I don't know.
Not much.
Showing you all the secret entrance.
Thank you, thank you.
They were loitering up there.
They were out there loitering, so.
Do you want to start Tuesday after the commission meeting, or do you wanna wait until we start Wednesday? There's not much on the agenda right now, but that's pretty much.
I don't, I don't think I have anything Tuesday that I have to do that I can finish up and.
Thank you.
We could be done early Thursday then.
Three, um.
Thank you.
Tuesday, or just?
It's up to you guys, whatever you want.
But we.
I mean, we can wait till Wednesday, if you wanna wait till Wednesday, if you wanna start Tuesday, we can start and see how far we get.
Right now, the general, I don't think we're gonna close session. We could be, we could be done with that probably.
Did Christie just ask for close? Did you guys say that?
I'd say in less than an hour, we could be done, and then we could do at least two or three hours.
That's fine.
Okay.
So, my Tuesday calendar says nine AM for commission in session, is that right?
That's your normal meeting, and then if we add budget, it would be after you do your normal.
Right, but not before.
Not before.
We just have to make, make sure we're gonna be here the rest of the day. We don't schedule anything that afternoon. I'm fine with doing it then, since we're gonna be here, and then we can, you know, if we finish what we don't have to do Thursday, or we can maybe finish Thursday then, then just don't have to do the following Tuesday.
I would say if we, we're done next week, we don't have to do the following week.
If there's some we wanna kick around for a.
I'm good with that.
Do we wanna start eight o'clock then Tuesday?
No, I think let's do regular agenda at nine, and then we'll start budget after the regular agenda.
All right.
Okay.
Okay, you guys, page sixty-three is Donnell in the book. And then Donnell, do you have changes from what was submitted?
Um, well, yeah, you have put, I had asked for additional five hundred hours in, um, part-time help. Um, and the reason is because in the last year, I've had, what, fifteen people terminated basically. Now, when I say terminated their employment, it's not that they were fired. Um, I would say there's probably at least one that was let go, but most of them have either retired or, um, or they just found other employment. That's a lot. I have twenty-two people working for me full-time. So for me to be training fifteen employees over the course of the last year, it's been quite, um, it's, it's. it's, it's taken a toll on all of the supervisors. We're not able to get to basically what we're needing to get to because we're covering for court, we're covering for the office. I mean, just like yesterday, I had five people call in sick yesterday. So, uh, I know that we get behind on things that affects the county, such as the, um, bill of costs that we submit. I think right now I'm submitted in May. I think was the last time I submitted any. Right? Is that right? Um, I know I'm working on June. June was huge. I had 54 defendants on June's list. So it's 54 cases that we have to get and figure all the costs, and those are not simple. You have a guy that might have five cases that he's got probation violations, and you're having to determine what time has already been previously billed versus, um, what you can bill and what you can't bill. So especially with trying to train new employees, it's hard to get to those type of tasks. I'm suggesting the additional 500 hours to help with training of staff so that I can, um, get things up to date. I would like to be able to have those hours, basically, um, to alleviate training of new employees. Any guys have any questions for me?
Just to give you a history on the part-time attorneys, or part-time that we pay for, because most of their people are paid by the state, they work for the state. We got into this business for record preservation and scanning, um, old files.
What I'd like to do is to move those part-time people into working on the bill of costs and the accounting.
I think state needs to take care of that stuff. They need to give you all another employee. I think we could do the part-time.
They need to pay our employees more.
We've been trying to catch up with that.
They make $28,000 coming in to work in there, and there's a lot of training. I mean, it takes a year to get an employee up to speed. And some employees that I've had in the last year didn't even last six months.
And this additional hour request would be just for this year, only because of, we're working on lobbying and legislation to, uh, get the clerk's wages, uh, increased to a compatible level, so we're not losing so many employees for higher-paying jobs, which is really what the issue is right now. We've lost a bunch of employees to ASCA, the Supreme Court. You know, we recently lost one to the wonderful county of Cole.
And I'm sure you're paying her more than $28,000.
And it's been, it's been a challenge for us, and, and, and I'm doing daily duties.
I'm gonna sound like a broken record, but same thing I said this morning, that, that's a, it's a state problem, and they need to be addressing it. I just, all this falls back on us every time, and if we have to, I mean, that's another 20,000.
It's the training of new employees is the problem, and that's someone I'm asking for, is some additional hours to be able to bring someone back to help me, Chris, and Jessica be able to train the employees properly. I mean, we are so spread thin.
I still see it as a state thing. I mean, as far as copying and scanning and stuff, I'd, I'd be more.
The reason why it's affecting the county is because we are unable to give the county, I, I'm back in August on bank recs. There are so many glitches in show me courts that I'm having to go in and figure system errors out. And, um, I, I'm working on August, and the, the computer is, uh, miscalculating our, my, uh, journal entries and, uh, my month-end adjustments. And so now I'm figuring out a workaround so I can at least get the August bank rec over to the county. So they will know, you know, that, uh, we're moving forward to September because I actually have moved forward with September because ASCA has no timeframe on when they're gonna get these glitches figured out. And I realize you are correct. It is, it is a state problem, but we're trying to work out something right now to get the county, the commission, uh, the information and the, uh, the bill of costs done in a timely manner. And this is just a temporary resolve that we're asking the commission for.
And we do provide a service to the community. Which is Cole County residents.
Donnell, do, uh, is there a club called the County Clerks of Missouri Association?
There is an association, yes.
And you're a member of that? Do, when you get together, is it a, a session like this, talking about what we're talking about?
Yes.
So it's not, it's not unique to Cole?
No. It is not.
And do they ever talk about getting pitchforks and torches and making a march on the Capitol or?
We have recently, our association just got a new lobbyist. We're actually interviewing, I'm not certain that we picked one yet, but we're interviewing for a new lobbyist. Um, not only that, but we have been sending our legislators, our representatives, letters in regards to the pay and asking them to increase the salaries. It is, you know, I, I, I don't really want to be complaining, it's just that job is getting harder. Every year it gets harder. It's something new. You know, we've got, right now, we're working in two different systems, and we've got the old system and we've got the new system. They're taking stuff out of the old system and moving it to the new system, and the new system isn't working properly. It's like, we're the testers.
We being Cole, or we, we being the?
Anybody in the clerks.
Oh, got it. Okay.
Statewide.
Right.
I mean, their bank recs are just as bad. They had, um, the, all of the, what we call the ACHs for jet pay, the ones that are coming into our banking account, they just didn't show up. They're not there on our system end, but they're there on our bank. So it's just, we have to now figure out and go through, and Chris, thank God, we've got Chris. Uh, and she watches it a lot. It's just all of this back and forth and trying to figure out where, you know, what, how much deposit would this one for? And what, what session did that match up into our system? It's really complicated. It's clerk work, I'm sorry.
But our issue is, we want to provide the county to get the, like, the bill of costs, and we can't do it. And it's really, it's, it's an issue for us because we're not getting the county the information or submitting it to the state so the county can get their proper reinforcements in a, in a timely manner. So that's why this is, would just be a temporary request.
Right. But, I mean, think about it, that's 15 out of 22 employees. That's a lot.
In one year time.
In one year time.
So you're really sure that, that this is a one-year thing, that it's gonna, everything's gonna?
Hopefully, hopefully we can get the legislator to increase. I know the state is going to pay an increase in January, but that's statewide. It's not upping our, and there's a 24, uh, you know, there is a workforce plan that's adopted by the legislator, but the money hasn't been divided out yet.
And we do have a representative on the budget committee that is, uh, supporting, and we have a circuit clerk that's working directly with a number of legislature in the budget committee. So we're, we're getting a, a united force to send letters to all of our representatives, but we actually have somebody on the budget committee that's on our side.
That's right.
We can, we can march with you to the Capitol with, with pitchforks and, and.
Torches.
Torches, yeah. I, cause I, I'm kinda like, you know, Jeff, the state should be doing this.
They quit doing stuff, and then if we keep going in there and, and, and rescuing them, they're gonna keep saying, you know what, we're gonna quit doing this. The counties will take it over, and we're already doing that at the health department. And it's just, it's frustrating, and it's nothing against you all. I've been telling you all day today about this.
100%. We wish that they would pay us more.
Okay. They're supposed to get us the information. We shouldn't have to go get the information ourselves as part of state government function.
I mean, they started just this month. They came out with a webinar training, and so for the last year, they haven't had any new training at all with COVID.
So the big bad guy is the state, but, but the, where you are focusing on, your laser is pointed at ASCA, or who is that?
ASCA controls our, um, clerical weighted workload. Depending on what cases that we have filed, how many cases are filed, is the direct response is how many, how many people we have hired. They have, um, a study that goes out every five years that we have to write down everything that we touch, what we do, for how long. And then they calculate that, and then based off of those numbers, like associate filings, maybe you get like this much credit for. And circuit files, you get this much credit for. And they combine that and say, this is how, based off your filings, this is how much your staff are gonna get.
Well, even after, even if that's cured, if the, if the software system isn't working, I mean, you've got money showing up in the bank account, and you can't identify where it belong, I mean, it belongs in the account, but you don't really know why, correct?
Well, we know that it should be there.
Well, but you don't know, do you know the individual case that, that, you're trying to trace these back to cases, right?
Sessions back, the, when we, they have automatic.
Currently, I'm doing manual, I'm doing the, um, manual, um, Excel spreadsheet on the deposits monthly because, uh, we're having electronic sessions explode in the system. They literally crash. So we have, and they're not even reporting the monies that go on each case, so I'm having to manually go in and figure, calculate this out and figure out what's going on here. We have like new filings where the money is not posting, you know, cause in, in, an attorney, they file a new petition, say in civil circuit, the filing fee is a hundred and seven dollars. The filing is accepted into our system, but the, the electronic session crashes where the money goes. So the, the money's not even going on the case right now. I'm manually tracking it. And if we pull up that new case, if we pull up the fee bill on that new case, there's no money posted to it because the electronic session, um, has totally crashed. And so we're having to manually go in and figure out, you know, why this money isn't posting properly. And I got ticketed to ASCA, and I found out a bunch of the, a bunch of other clerk's offices throughout the state have tickets into ASCA. But, you know, I'm lucky if I get an answer back in, and I'm not exaggerating, a year's time. So.
So. Yeah, you've got some real issues.
Yeah.
So basically on the budget, you're just asking for 500 additional?
500 additional hours.
For this next.
For this next.
Yeah, cause I don't, I don't think, I don't know what we need to do about the issues you're having, but.
Was there anything else in the budget you wanted to talk about?
Um, I'm just, no, because the only thing is, uh, the equipment service. I'm assuming you just adjusted down based off of the last?
Yeah, I just, yeah, projected everything from the current year.
Okay, yeah, that's fine. That's it. That's the only thing I really had, is the need of training staff.
Uh, we have our lobby group too that can maybe help. Sounds like you gotta just draw a screw up, and that really.
Yeah, there's a lot of, a lot of circuit clerks that are, have retired within the last year, I gotta tell you. There's a lot of experiences going out the door, and they're, they're just tired of it because we, we just, and it's not just Cole County circuit clerk's office. It's throughout the state. Nobody can retain staff because of the wages. There's high turnover. And for Donnell and I concerned, we always, you know, we want to give Cole County the information, but we're having an issue because of this high turnover. And our focus is, has to, we can't focus on what we need to do because we're training new employees, we're covering court, we're answering phones, we're issuing, you know, we're talking. All of our supervisors are all doing that right now because we're still training.
You're close to, uh, selecting a new lobbyist?
We have interviewed three.
Okay.
We should be getting one in the next week or so.
All right. Just pass that along when that person selected, the, the name of the, your lobbyist.
Okay, we'll do.
We'd like to introduce, I'm sure they know Randy Scher and Brian Bernsketter are the commission's lobbyists. There's no rea, and if you've got, you know, if you, you've got somebody on the House Budget Committee that understands what you're asking for, that, maybe that's, should be helpful, but you never, you don't know.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks guys.
Appreciate it.
Is there anybody you guys want to go back to or talk about, anything you saw?
Picking on the state today, so what you got for me?
We've just kind of touched on every department so far, and heard their arguments. We touched on the ones that, um, we kind of skimmed over the ones yesterday that are the odd funds that some didn't talk about. So I think maybe let's stop here.
Okay.
Regroup on Tuesday. Um, if you guys have additional questions between now and then, let me know. We do have a few salary things we're trying to pull together for you. Cars, department directors and.
Oh, yes, yes, yes.
So, um, we'll work on that between now and then. What we'll do next week is kind of walk back through each individual department and the requests that they had. Once we get through all of those requests, then we will tackle salaries.
So most of it seemed like it was either people wanting, uh, budgeted or, uh, salary adjustments, or maybe some more people.
Right.
We didn't have a whole lot of other stuff, so it.
Um, so the main departments, um, Sheriff's Department and Public Works had some other things that we probably should figure out first.
Yeah, but those were.
That's gonna be dependent on if they have the funding to do all of the salary things.
But we really didn't have a whole lot in there that.
We didn't, we didn't.
They were wanting to change what the budget officer, you know, changed up, so that's pleasantly surprising.
And then, did you guys see anything else in the revenue side of things that you want to talk about, projections there that, like I said, hopefully next week we will have sales tax numbers, definite sales tax numbers. Usually those come about the sixth or seventh of the month. So, um, hopefully right in next week, we'll get that final number. We're waiting on insurance, so insurance is a big one. We like to get a firm number in there. We're waiting on insurance renewal for property and liability. We just did work comp, so we'll get that one trued up. So we try to fix all of that we can based on actual numbers, um, once we get them. So there's still a lot of moving parts and pieces between now and the end of the year. And then we will, once we're done and kind of have set what we want to do, all of those catch forward and carry forward numbers will be adjusted at the very end based on, based on actual numbers.
Yep. Anything else? Move, we stand and recess till 4:30. All in favor?
Aye.
Recession, boys and girls?
I've got more damage.